Committee meeting. I call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you for joining us this evening. Now, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence? Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Gray?
Here.
Baller?
Here.
Marlowe?
Here.
Murray?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Sekelik?
Here.
Nam?
Here.
Buck?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. I would like to publicly announce that the more the board met an executive session on September 3rd, 2021, to receive legal advice from our solicitor. Item number two on the agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Moving to item three, that would normally be our presentations, but we do not have any presentations this evening. Item four is our superintendent's update. That would be Dr. Messinger is planning to update everyone on the school mask mandate. Dr. Messinger is actually at the soccer field this evening for a very good reason. He will be joining us later. His daughter has currently tied the school record for shutouts in soccer. And by this time, they may be celebrating. So we are excited to see him when he comes and he will update on the school mask mandate. In the meantime, we will move ahead to the public comment session. When Dr. Messinger arrives, we will let him update immediately after the current public comment finishes so that you have that information as you make your public comment. When we make public comment this evening, in order to be efficient with our time, I will read the first five names or the next five names in line. I ask that you please come to the the center aisle or the your left hand aisle and spaced out and so that therefore we can keep things moving along. The first five names that I have this evening are Dr. Joseph Murphy, Mr. Craig Fair, Ms. Kimberly Bolts, Mr. Bobby Schank, and Ms. Lacy Simpson. Those wishing to make public comment were asked to submit that request by four o'clock this evening via email or online form. Every request will get their opportunity to speak. This evening, we understand that this is a very polarized issue responding to the mask mandate. We also understand that this is a very emotional issue for men for many. We ask that you please be respectful and courteous at all times, giving the floor to whomever is speaking and not speaking when other people are speaking. Each person who is getting public comment, you will have four minutes in which to speak. Before speaking, please state your name and address. And first, we have Dr. Joseph Murphy.
That better? All right, perfect. Joseph Murphy, 19 Wildflower Circle. I'm in a very unique situation. I work across the hall from an epidemiologist. I work very closely with two physicians who have been working with us at our institution for the last 18 months to develop our plan to keep our our students safe and healthy. First of all, I want to commend all of you for the job you've done. And thank you for your service to the community. I think what you've done over the last year, your data shows that it's benefactor. Masking policy has worked over the last 18 months here in Northern Lebanon, and I don't see a reason to change it. We've been we've been very successful in my institution. We've been doing testing on top of all the social distancing, the masking, and the cleaning procedures that we've done. This has worked very, very well. Our positivity rate was less than 2% throughout the year because of what we've done. And I think your positivity rate here was probably very, very low. So I don't see a reason to change it. When I talk about this, I've been working in sports healthcare for probably 20 years. When we talk about public health measures, they're the same thing. You stack them on top of each other. You don't send a football player out there with just a helmet. They are in a helmet and a mouthguard and shoulder pads and hip pads and knee pads and diapads. You just don't do one thing. You do everything to protect them. And that's why I think you need to continue the methods that you've done so far throughout the year. I appreciate it and thank you all for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you for thank you for your comment, Dr. Murphy. Our next public comment is from Mr. Craig Fair. Mr. Fair, please state your name and address before you speak.
Do we have to do the address?
Yes, because all speakers must reside within the district.
I'm Craig Fair. I'm at 127 East Main Street here in Fredericksburg. I'm here today because of the situation with the masking and I'm very glad I did put the mandate back in place because of the safety for the children. I brought along my wife. It was actually from my wife and myself to talk about the situation with the masking. And she has actually worked in in certain situations, especially to do with COVID pandemic. And here she is, her name Shannon Fair.
Masking is very important for the kids. I actually work in this field. I've worked on COVID ICU unit ICU units. I have taken care of COVID vented patients. People have died. I've bagged patients. Masks work. Vaccines work. Not it's not an opinion. It's a fact. A fact. It's a fact.
Please give the speaker the floor. Thank you.
I have a seven-year-old child who's not vaccinated. All my other children are vaccinated. I care about everyone. Masks protect everyone. It's very, very important that masks stay in place. It's not not an opinion. So I hope that everything stays in place. And that's all I have to say.
Also, I just want to bring up an attention. I did send an email to the school board and the school faculty in the whole thing. And it's really concerning that I got two replies back. It's very concerned because it is to do with this pandemic. All right, since I'm going to read it, since I haven't gotten many replies about it, I'm going to actually read it exactly. My name is Craig Fair. I have four children attending this school district, Northern Lebanon School District, three in high school and one in elementary. Myself, like many other parents out there, they're very concerned about the upcoming school year, 2122. This COVID pandemic has took a toll mentally and physically on everyone during these times. The masking policy that was put in place is very concerning. This was prior to the mandate from Governor Ross. The masking policy was put in place is very concerning. Why would a school district allow mask option? It is disheartening to know the children of the school will they will not keep the children safe and be receptive to the deadly virus. The CDC recommends masks indoors and outdoors. Why is the district making it optional? My parental opinion is masks need to be mandatory only for the safety of the student body, faculty, and the staff. I witnessed many things throughout the past couple of weeks here. One time about one of my children was attending cross-country. He was here for one day and and all the people they had, there was no mask. And there was one child that had the mask and it was my own child. That's that's dreadful. The student with the mask, like I said, was my child. This has to be the most unsafe situation I have ever seen in a school function. We started since this this situation has came up. I have taken that child out of the school district permanently because of that specific reason. I'd rather have the safety be safe. I have an.
We ask that if we want to continue this as a public meeting, we must all be respectful and courteous of the speaker. If you wish to speak, you may put in a request to speak for next week's meeting and you will too also have your four minutes to give your opinion. Thank you.
All I ask was this one thing. All I ask is to reconsider these situations because you guys that are anti-mask versus the masked people. The safety of the children should be your most utmost important thing in your life as a parent. You guys have opinions. We have opinions. Everybody has opinions. But guess what? I think the safety of the child comes first more than your own and my self opinion.
Madam President.
That's all I have all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. and Mrs. Fair. Our next speaker is Ms. Kimberly Bolts. Please state your name and address before you speak.
Sure. My name is Kimberly Bolts and I reside at 149 Twin Creek Drive in Jonestown. I am going to start off with some statistics because I think it's important in this situation. On August 6th, during a hearing with the Department of Education and Department of Health, Acting Secretary of Health Allison Beam stated that there's been 14 deaths in children between the ages of 15 and 19 in Pennsylvania since the pandemic started. That tells me that there's been zero deaths between 0 to 14. But with 851,000 children between 15 and 19 in the state, that breaks down to point 00002%. That's four zeros. Based on a study from Germany and Austria, and I quote, "A child's current chance of death from COVID-19 in America is lower than their chance of dying from a lightning strike or a car accident." Ms. Beam also stated in the same hearing, there's approximately 1.9 million kids in the public and private school systems in PA. In a AP News article dated August 31st, state health officials said more than 5,000 students have tested positive for the coronavirus since the start of this school year. So 1.5 thousand students testing positive divided by 1.9 million breaks down to 002%. And those statistics are important. Children are the least vulnerable for this. My daughter's in seventh grade this year. And last year I pulled her from school and we did cyber school specifically because of the mask mandate. I don't feel that she needs to be masked during during for seven hours a day. In kindergarten, she was recommended, tested, and has been in the gifted program since first grade. Throughout her school career, she has earned good grades, made the honor roll, and earned several education awards for excellence. Her sixth grade year during cyber school, she received Cs and Bs. Clearly not usual for her. She she struggled. And I mean, I can't sit still in front of a computer and do schoolwork for seven hours. How can I ask an 11 or 12-year-old to do it? She just couldn't focus and she wants to come back to school and I want her to come back to school. And we were thrilled when we made the masks optional. I'm not anti-mask. I'm pro-choice. If you want to wear a mask, that's fine for you. But I feel that my child should have the option. I've heard many times that, you know, pull your pull your child out, do the cyber, do homeschool. And we tried that and as I stated before, it didn't work. My child has a I pay my taxes in this school district. I live here. Matter of fact, I own two residents in this school district, so I pay double the taxes. And my child has just as much right to public education as any other child. In the United States, we don't live under a dictatorship and that's exactly what the governor is trying to do. The people of Pennsylvania spoke back in May when they stripped him of his his overreaching powers. Over 90% of the school districts in the state made masks optional. Well, the governor didn't like that. So here we are again, fighting for our kids just to have the option to wear masks in school. These masks, I even brought the box, not tested for protection against COVID. That's what this one says. Other ones say that they don't protect against COVID. So these don't protect against it. The cloth masks that you can see through don't protect against it. So I just don't I don't understand what what the purpose is here.
That's fine. Thank you. Ms. Gold, thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment, Ms. Gold. Our next speaker is do we have our next speaker? Ms. Bobby Schike, I apologize for that. Ms. Schike, please state your name and address before before you speak.
All right, my name's Lacy Simpson. I live at 317 Shepherd Street, Jonestown. I'm just going to speak from my heart.
Excuse me, I believe I I said Bobby Schank. Do we have? He changed. Okay, thank you. All right, I apologize for interrupting. We have Ms. Lacy Simpson speaking with us.
All right, so I'm just going to speak from my heart. I have three kids in Lickdough Elementary. I have one in second grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. We invited by the mask mandate last year. It was hard for these kids to breathe in their masks. It was hard for them to leave their masks up at a long period of time. Last year it was a mandate. This year it was a suggested. It's it Governor Walsh suggested and we it happened. Me and my husband were like, we were talking about it, deciding if we wanted to pull our kids out of school, homeschool them, charter school them, private school them. We weren't sure. I really don't want to do either. I'm not certified. And another thing, like to teach three kids, three different grades is really hard. Okay, I had to do it back when COVID first hit. It was totally miserable for me and them. This, I feel like this is ridiculous. The numbers aren't there. I feel like everybody who got COVID last year did what they were supposed to do. Quarantine for the time they were supposed to quarantine, came back to school. It was fine. Unless you have underlying conditions, underlying health conditions, stuff like that, I don't feel like it's necessary for us to mask these kids. Nowhere else is masked except 12 or K through 12, like stores everywhere, state colleges. I mean, there was just 80,000 people in Wisconsin at the Penn State game, arm to arm, no masks. I don't understand why here we have to mask our children for seven hours a day when they're trying to learn. It's lack of oxygen. It's anxiety. It's depression. It's mental health. I just don't agree with it as a parent. I don't co-parent with the government. Okay, I don't do that. As a parent, I'm supposed to make educational and health decisions for my child. And that's what I'm here to do. So can you please look at this? I want to work with you guys. I'm not against you guys by any means. I want to work with you to help fight this for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Simpson. And now we have Dr. Messinger has arrived from the soccer field.
I thought the clapping was for me. I apologize. When I took this job, my wife was very concerned about about it. She thought it might impact us at some point. She admitted about six months in that it was going well, but she couldn't predict the pandemic and now has has recognized it. She even she doesn't doesn't actually say to me, see, I told you so because this was so unpredictable. However, one of the things I feel I need to continue to do is to be a dad. And as you may know, I have two students here. My daughter's on the soccer team and I profusely apologize, but she just got a shutout, which is her 20th career shutout in an NL record. Pardon me, I will listen to all the comments on video tomorrow that I missed.
Thank you and congratulations. Now we have our next five public comments. So if you could please come and stand in the aisle. We have Mr. Nathan Simpson, Mr. Robbie England, Mr. John Brewer, Ms. Sharla Angle, and Mr. Marcus Rydel. We begin with Mr. Nathan Simpson. Mr. Simpson, please state your name and address before you speak. You have four minutes.
Nathan Simpson. I'm at 317 Shepherd Street, Jonestown, Pennsylvania. You'll probably hear a few of the same things you just heard earlier from my wife. We have about similar views on the masking situation. It was really difficult for us to comprehend how as parents, we don't have a choice in this matter. These are our kids, our children. You know, the government is basically health organization, government, school board is basically trying to tell us what's best and most healthiest for our children. I'm not against masks. If you want to wear a mask, go right ahead. My children do not need to wear a mask. I don't feel like the mask actually works. We just the other girl woman just up here, she read the box. All the numbers don't make sense to me at all. I'm not going to sit here and bore you with numbers because we all know the numbers. But we just all got to come together on this. It's dividing us. If we don't come together and figure out what's best for our school district, for our children, for everyone. These children need to see normal again. I mean, seeing people in masks hiding their face, hiding in fear and being scared. It's absolutely insane to me. It doesn't even make a bit of sense. Well, I have three daughters that my wife just said, one in second grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And it's not always easy to get your children to go to school. Maybe some children, it's easy to go. Sometimes our kids don't want to go to school. After we talked to them about masks, it was kicking, fighting, and screaming for our kids to even be interested in wearing masks. Me and my wife spent numerous hours on the internet trying to figure out ways to get waivers to get out of this mask rule. I went to talk to my family doctor four times, trying to get different ways to get him to figure out a way for us to get these kids out of masks. It's putting anxiety, it's putting pressure, it's putting this this this. Everyone is just like me and my wife were losing our minds this whole weekend trying to figure out the behind this. It makes absolutely zero sense to put a mask on a kid where you could take four masks, breathe through it, and it still fogs up glasses. But then water droplets going through four masks, it's definitely going through one little cloth one, this one. I mean, it's just, it's just, it's sad that we're we have to be here today to voice our opinions so we can have a voice for our children and not the government, not the health board. And I really hope that you guys all come together because I'm going to fight this with you guys or without you guys. But like I said before, I really don't want to divide and have this half and this half. Hopefully, everyone can come together, see the real problem of what's going on here and we all correct it as one. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Simpson. Our next speaker is Mr. Robbie England.
Good evening. My name is Robbie England. I live at 211 West Market in Jonestown. I come to this podium tonight, first of all, as a concerned parent of three children in the secondary school here at NL. Also, I work as a family practice physician assistant. So I have a vested interest in accurate and consistent messaging for the medical community. And my apologies for the last 18 months over many in my field that have not done very well on that front. First of all, a big thank you to the NL School Board and Superintendent Messinger. You serve in a largely thankless, yet incredibly important role for our community. Each of you has no doubt spent countless hours reading articles and responding to concerned parents over the ongoing drama surrounding the COVID-19 situation. The Health and Safety Plan that was approved in July reflected a sincere desire to provide for the optimal educational experience for the students in our district, while at the same time keeping them as safe as possible. I would like to use my time to simply state a few observations. Number one, the issue that we are dealing with really has nothing to do with masks. If it did, these cheap masks would not be tolerated as they are, quote, I can't read that. Right now it's too small, but I did write it down. They're not personal protective equipment and they quote are not intended for medical use or to prevent any disease or illness, end quote. Number two, the issue that we must face is that our state has effectively removed our elected school board directors and parents from our district for making the best decisions for our kids. If this board had voted to mandate masks for this school year, I would have disagreed with it, but I would have respected your decision because you have the authority to make that decision. However, the children of NL are now being controlled by an unelected bureaucrat in Harrisburg who has no skin in the game, at least in our district. The move by the acting health secretary has placed our administrators in a hostage position by threatening them with removal of their credentials and possible jail time if they fail to enforce this order. I did talk to an individual in state Senator Gebhardt's office today and he told me that the senator encourages school districts to defy the order as it is illegal and unenforceable. His recommendation is for districts to follow. His recommendations for districts to follow their previously approved health and safety plans. I also contacted state rep Diamond's office. I've left messages with him. He was inundated with calls, no doubt. And my understanding is he's recommending the same thing. Number three, I'm unwilling to sit back and watch the scenario play out and hope for the best. I have called the governor's office to lodge my complaint with him and I have also contacted a law firm to look into the possibility of filing a lawsuit against the governor and acting health secretary. I am well aware that this action requires significant time, energy, and no doubt money. But I'm prepared to do what it takes to claim the space that our school directors deserve and that we as parents of students in this district own and it's rightfully ours. You may think that it's foolhardy for individuals to go up against a large state and have any hope of winning. I tend to think that they have a very flimsy case and that the rightness of the cause is far more important than the chances of winning or losing. Number four, now is the time for the NL Board of Directors and Concerned Parents to file a lawsuit against the governor and acting health secretary. If not now, when? If not us, who? As this is far more of a question of who actually runs this district, then do you agree that students should wear masks? I would invite all of us to join together in the effort to make sure that locally affected school board directors maintain the authority that is constitutionally theirs. I am convinced. I'm convinced that there are much bigger items than masks in the pipeline. If we have any hope of continuing to direct our course as a district on a local level, now is the time to be heard. Let's call their offices, write letters, express our views, and file lawsuits against the perpetrators of this overreach. And let's keep Northern Lebanon on the right track. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. England. Our next speaker is Mr. John Brewer. Mr. Brewer, please state your name and address.
John Brewer, 53 Tree Line Avenue, Fredericksburg. First of all, good evening and thank you. First of all, good evening and thank you very much for traversing through these difficult times and the waters, if you will. You're instilling a sense of pride back in the district. I see building and ground movements, long-term plans, and that's something where the community can rally around. And I'd like to see more of that. And that stems with choice. It's a parent's obligation as to whether or not they want to provide a mask for their kid. It doesn't stem from our government. So with that, you know, I'd like to thank you because you're our local elected officials, U nine plus one. You are our local government and its grassroots. And it's your job to look out to what serves the best interests of our community, our students, for the greater common good. You know, I say this because our government was founded on the basic principles that the people govern, we the people. And and that government was based upon like a Republican government, not a party or any one party, a Republican government, where it's utilizing direct democracy. And that's through town meeting, which we're doing tonight to solve our best interests. Because our interests here in this local community are different from that of maybe Philadelphia. And to compare Philadelphia or Montgomery County to us isn't appropriate. You know, there's three important words with we the people. It is the people who hold the power in government. It's not the other way around. That's a slippery slope we're traversing here lately. Where we're starting to lose some of those freedoms, liberties, rights. And you know, it was drafted in a manner that prevents the government from violating our rights. Everyone has to obey the Constitution, the President of the United States, the Supreme Court, the Senate. Everyone has to obey the Constitution. I don't see why our governor isn't. All right. Choice right now is of the essence. Not only is solitary talking point here is we have a system where it's like fall in line or else. It's threatening. And it's, it's, it's coming down to our kids, where our kids are even feeling that way. And now your kids come to school apprehensive, a little bit anxiety. I'm a teacher of over twenty years. My wife is a teacher over twenty years. This week was so refreshing, this last week. Why? Because many schools in this area said, hey, choice. And kids came back, they were smiling, you saw it on their faces. They're thrilled to be back. Kids want to learn. They want to learn. But when you have a mask and it hides your facial expressions, which is so important as a teacher when teaching, especially at the lower levels, the primary levels when they're teaching language development, reading, spelling, all that language acquisition, and they're trying to read tongue placement, everything, facial expressions, cues, social cues. I've noticed in the last two years how kids are struggling to read social cues because they're masked up.
That's time.
That's fine.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Brewer. Our next speaker is Ms. Sharla Angle. Ms. Angle, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Hello, my name is Sharla Angle and I am from Ono. I have a daughter in the third grade of Fredericksburg Elementary School. And she was so excited to go back to school mask free last week. And as soon as she found out she had to wear a mask on Monday, she did not want to go. She fought with me and did not want to wake up. She was like, I don't want to go to school, mom. And she was like, okay, I gave her a choice of which mask. She didn't care to choose one and she just didn't want to go to school. And I told her, you know, I'm going to fight this for you. And I told her I was going to make her wear one because I wasn't going to punish you as a school board because it wasn't up to you. It was up to our governor. But I feel as my daughter's parent, that it is our choice to stick up for our children, to give them a choice. And I feel that the parents should all come together and form a wolf pack and teach the governor and treat him like a sheep that he is and that we need to come together and swarm against him for our children. Because my daughter has migraines and headaches and she can't administer her own Tylenol. At school, she had to go to the nurse today because she had a headache because of the mask. And last year she was sent home because she had a respiratory issue. And she was, she had a runny nose. She didn't have a fever. She wasn't coughing, but they sent her home. But nowadays they label everything as COVID. I'm not going to sit here and say I'm saying that masks are awful, but for certain children they are. She is also in a household with a hearing impaired parent. I have hearing aids on both sides. My father has hearing aids. You talk to me with a mask, I have no idea what you are telling me. You take down your mask, I can read your lips. And that is where I am coming from is where she needs to be in school where she can be happy and smiling, looking at her friends, being a normal child like when I was raised. I loved going to school and playing on recess, not being six feet apart, not constantly applying hand sanitizer. I was loving school because I love playing with my friends. And I think we all need to come together and make that a reality again. Because I just feel like that reality can exist if we just all come together as a school board and parents and make it a choice.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Angle. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Marcus Rydel. Mr. Rydel, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Hi, I'm Marcus Rydel. I live in Tower City, Pennsylvania. I have two children at Jonestown Elementary. I also work with legislators within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's General Assembly. And I'd like to give you some information tonight concerning the mask mandate announced on 31 August 21 by Acting Secretary Health Allison Beam that was to go into effect today. And we all remember back on 10 June of this year when the General Assembly got rid of the emergency declaration, edited everything, edited the governor's emergency powers. Anybody under his jurisdiction, they no longer had any powers to enforce anything. Secretary of Health's mask mandate for all the public and private schools is an attempt to circumvent Pennsylvania's General Assembly. Since there is no emergency declaration in place, they have no more powers. Secretary of Health Bean claims to have authority under the Pennsylvania Disease Prevention and Control Act of 1955. Now, Pennsylvania's public health law, it's a patchwork of statutes, regulation, state and local. Recognizing this complexity of the Pennsylvania health law, the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts developed a bench book to provide Pennsylvania judges with critical information they need to make decisions on this. After reading the bench book and discussing it with legal counsel from the General Assembly, we cannot find anything about placing restrictions on healthy people within the Commonwealth. It also states that in order for the Department of Health to place any restriction, mitigation, quarantine, isolation, closures of public or private facilities or mandates, the Department of Health must take, and I'll use the school districts since we're in a school district, to Levina County Court of Common pleas and prove beyond a reasonable doubt with clear and concise evidence that COVID-19 exists in one of our buildings. And they must take each individual building to court and prove that beyond a reasonable doubt. That is the only way they can use the Disease Prevention and Control Act. So in short, on Disease Prevention and Control Act, they must take every school district in this Commonwealth to court. It's the only way it can be enforced. Now, this mask mandate also violates the Regulatory Review Act that was put in place by a General Assembly in 1982. This established the Independent Regulatory Review Commission to provide uniform oversight of the rulemaking process in the Commonwealth and to act as a consensus builder among Commonwealth agencies, legislative standing committees, and interested parties. It also charged with reviewing our regulations that Commonwealth agency proposed for promulgation. Any agency under the governor's jurisdiction should also review any executive order or other administrative circular in effect at the time it plans to proceed with a regulatory review process. Also, in order for a regulation, rule, law, or mandate outside of an emergency declaration to take effect, and I'm sure our solicitor will know this one, it has to go through the regulatory review process and be published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin. The last bulletin published within our Commonwealth was for August of this year and does not include the mask mandate by the Acting Secretary of Health. So with that, in discussing with local legislators that I'm in contact with in the Capitol and our legal advice from General Assembly Counsel, it is currently, excuse me, it is currently invalid and unenforceable due to the fact that it has not been published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin and has not gone through the review process. As you all know, the General Assembly has filed a lawsuit against Governor Wolf, Acting Secretary Health, and we have a court date of 12 September coming up here on this ruling.
That's time.
May I have two minutes, please, to finish up?
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rydel. Our next five speakers are Nathan Carpenter, Mr. Carpenter, Ms. Eugene Ulrich, Ms. Beverly Ulrich, Mr. Shen Kreiser, and I believe Mr. Clovis Crane. And I apologize if I am getting these salutations incorrect on here. Our first speaker is Mr. Nathan Carpenter. Mr. Carpenter, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Thank you. My name's Nathan Carpenter, 110 Fisher Avenue, Jonestown. I have to ask one question. Where are all the my body, my choice people? Where are they? I'm going to try to not be redundant with some of the other good points that other people made. But I think at a time like this, I think somebody said emotionally charged. These are crucial conversations, ones that we have to have, as many other people had brought up. But sometimes you just have to find common ground. And common ground, can we all agree that 2020 for everyone sucked? So that being said, 2021, we all had this vision of what it was going to be, vaccines, this, that, all this stuff was coming out, it was going to go away. And then there goes the carrot. We're to the point now, when does it end? When are we done? Let me back up. You, you guys all do have a thankless job. And, and you deserve a thank you. You have been there. You've had our backs with this. I know everyone here. I don't think, I know that no one here has made a decision to hurt anyone. Everybody has made decisions, whether unanimous or not. And what they felt in their heart was the best thing for students as a group, as a school district. Okay? However, my side of things, the way I see them, a lot of other people comment, I'm not anti-mask, I'm free choice. I want to give my kids the ability to choose to wear a mask. If they want to wear a mask, they wear a mask. If they don't, they don't. And shame on the parents that have their kids living in fear every day of their lives that they're outside at a school function, running or doing some exercise, and they're scared to take a mask off. Shame on everyone. Shame on anyone. Something that wasn't discussed exactly, definition of PPE, that's personal protective equipment. Somebody made a comment about a helmet and a football player. That's personal protective equipment. All right. Not YPE, not your, not your protective equipment. Personal protective equipment. I'm aware of something. I'm going to do something to protect myself, just like we make decisions to protect our children or let them go out on their own and make certain decisions on their own. We as parents need to continue to have that right to make those choices. Why do we have to fight to regain the ability to make these choices? I don't recall voting or electing or authorizing any one person to either make decisions or authorize other people to make decisions for me and my family. These are personal choices that we have been stripped of. And again, I don't recall anybody that everybody here said, yep, go ahead, make these choices for us as parents. It's okay. It's wrong. When are we done with this? Because I can tell you right now, we all want to stand with someone and fight this. And if it's you, I promise you, many people out here, we have your backs. It's our turn to have your backs and fight this. And that is a solemn vow that I make to every one of you. This is a time for unity and not division. And it seems like there are so many people out there that continue to push this division. It's not about mask or no mask. This is about our rights as Americans, period.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Carpenter. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Eugene Ulrich. Mr. Ulrich, you please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Eugene Ulrich, 791 Ono Road. I'm a retired NL teacher, thirty-five years. I'm invested in this community. I grew up here. I went to school here. My wife went to school here. My kids went to school here, and now I have a couple of grandkids going to school here. So I care very much about this district. And speaking about having worked here, Mr. Messinger's dad was my boss. I've had several bosses. Most of the time, very good. Sometimes I didn't like what my boss told me to do. I didn't agree with what he told me to do. I didn't think it was the best thing to do. But I respected the position. I respected the authority. So this is a little different perspective for us to consider. Tonight, whenever this decision is made, you are going to be teaching a lesson to our kids. The topic is, what do I do when somebody in authority tells me to do something that I don't like? That's something we need to think about sincerely because kids are going to learn the lesson. If you make the decision that we are going to defy that authority, kids won't miss it. Teenagers especially won't miss it. I raised a couple of kids. They were good kids. But anybody who has teenagers knows there are times when they are not going to like the things you tell them to do. They're not going to want to do them, and they're going to want to defy your authority. I don't think we should be teaching them that that's the thing to do. I may not like the situation. Regardless of what my position is medically, regardless of what my position is medically, I don't like. If I don't like this position or this decision, it doesn't mean that it's okay for us to set this precedent before our kids. It's going to come back to bite us as parents. It's going to.
Please stop the comments when the speaker is speaking. Our solicitor is keeping time. Every person who is speaking will get four minutes.
I hope you're not counting my time. Thank you. Congratulations.
If we wish to continue this as a public forum, we need to be kind. If we wish to continue this as a public forum, we need to be kind and courteous and respectful of all of the speakers, regardless of their position.
To decide to defy this order would be teaching our kids a lesson, that that's how you deal with a situation when you don't like what authority is telling you to do. It's going to affect how efficiently we run our schools. It's going to affect their future when they get a job. It's an important lesson. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Eugene Ulrich. Our next speaker is Ms. Beverly Ulrich. Ms. Ulrich, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Beverly Ulrich. I live at 791 Ono Road, Anvil. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to express my opinion regarding the use of masks in our schools. I am a registered nurse with over 20 years' experience in the operating room, where I was required to wear a mask every day to prevent the spread of infection. So I'm well aware of the value of the mask wearing. I have grandchildren attending the Northern Lebanon High School. Thankfully, we're all vaccinated. Unfortunately, the highly-
Please give the speaker the floor.
I think people are forgetting about the Delta variant, the highly contagious Delta variant that has become-
If we cannot respect the speaker, we will move this to an executive session. We will end public comment. We do want to hear from each and every person that has put in a request to speak. We cannot continue to do that with these continued interruptions.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the highly contagious Delta variant has become a game changer. Cases in our area are rapidly rising. It is imperative that we protect our children, especially since there are many too young to be vaccinated and many whose parents are choosing to not have their 12- to 18-year-olds vaccinated. Research has shown that the most effective way to provide protection in addition to vaccination is by wearing a mask and social distancing while indoors in public. I understand that some children struggle to wear masks, but I believe that if they understand the reason for and the effectiveness of properly wearing a mask, they might be more compliant, and I have found this to be true in the operating room when I work with children there. As a nurse, I care that our children are kept safe and that we do what we can to slow the community spread. I do not want to see the school shut down and activities canceled from an outbreak that could have been prevented. We cannot have it both ways. Either students and staff wear masks, or chances are high that we will close from the spread of the virus. This is not, to me, this is not about power or control or freedom or even fear. It's about best medical practice and being responsible citizens by keeping others safe and protected. One more thing I'd like to say is that I also do not want my tax dollars to be spent on senseless litigation to fight a necessary mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Ulrich. Our next speaker is Ms. Shen Kreiser. Ms. Kreiser, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Shen Kreiser, 10118 Jonestown Road, Grantville. So we started this year under the publicly approved health and safety plan. You know, the state said you needed to approve their-
Please allow the speaker to have the floor.
The state required each district to have their health and safety plan. Northern Lebanon, I think, has done a great job with that. I worked a lot with York County School Districts through 2020, helping them identify ways that they could try to mitigate the spread of COVID through my position there. So I've done a lot of research on what works for schools and what doesn't work for schools by looking at other other countries where they've had success, you know, keeping their kids in school in person. And I've been very proud when people ask me, "How did the school year go?" Because I have five kids. And I've been able to proudly say that all of, you know, my kids have been able to attend elementary school in person five days a week, and I thank the school board for making that possible. I've talked to other parents, and it was certainly not easy last year, and I'm glad that we were able to continue that this year. It's really unfortunate the state has put you in this difficult position between a mandate from the Department of Health and your duty as elected officials to represent the constituents of the school district. As other people have said, you know, Europe doesn't require masks for kids that are in elementary age and certainly no one under six, and in most cases, not for kids under 12. And the UK absolutely says not for primary kids because they're learning the communication skills, as some of the other parents have alluded to. And we know from the data that was cited by another parent that kids are generally at a lower risk from contracting COVID and also from having below longer-term effects of it. They're not zero, but they're pretty small. They have greater risk of drowning or being in a car accident. And we accept these risks every day. It's not, you know, we drove here, we drove our kids to school, we put them on the school bus this morning, and we all accepted those risks as parents. And so, you know, we can accept sending them to school in person during a pandemic. If this were about more than politics, we would expect the mask to be mandated everywhere and for all of society. We, our kids can, our kids can go to Storytime at the library and gathers together and not wear masks. They can attend gymnastics and be with kids from other school districts, and they're not wearing masks in that situation. But for some reason where the state has decided that kids in school should be wearing masks for seven hours a day, that's right. So, you know, you as a school board, you're unfortunately in a very difficult position here. I have looked at a couple of other school districts around this area, and a couple of them have taken some interesting stances to this. One that I want to point out is the Red Lion area school district has decided that they will comply with the mandate. They will inform their students of it, but they have decided that they are not going to be the policeman of the community. That's not their job. That's not what they were elected to do. They don't want to sow division in the community, they want to sow unity, and they want to represent people of their community. So, you know, as you as a school board here, you have options. You can, you have a very hard decision to make here, but I think it's pretty obvious where the community stands on the masking issue. And so I think that it's very important that you decide how you're going to do this, because if you want to wait for legislation or you want to wait for a court case, those take time, and any legislative measure is likely to be vetoed by the governor. And I'm not sure that the legislator has votes to override the governor's veto, if that's what you were intending to wait on. So just in closing, we cannot replace critical thinking with political thinking. You know, the time here is to act now and make a good decision for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Kreiser. Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Clovis Crane. Mr. Crane, please state your name and address. You have four minutes.
Testing, testing. My name is Clovis Crane from 708 Gerebel Road, Lebanon, Pennsylvania. The father of four children in the Northern Lebanon School District. I hold a bachelor's degree of education and a minor degree in sociology from Purdue University. We love this community. We lived here since 2004. I have one graduate at Northern Lebanon. She graduated a year early here from Northern Lebanon. Thank you guys for the opportunity to let her do that. And I'm a COVID survivor, so I've been through it. I'm sure that many of us have as well. But last year, our family chose to homeschool our children as a precautionary measure to protect from COVID-19. My parents are vaccinated, and I'm not against anything anyone, someone wants to do to protect themselves or their family. But I am open to parental choice and what, doing what you think is the right thing to do for your family and your children. Since COVID's been around, there's been a wealth of knowledge gained about the virus and what groups it affects most. We need to follow the facts. I don't want to cave to fear, and I don't want to do the feel-good thing. I want to look at the facts and make an informed decision on how I should move forward with my family. And armed with knowledge, our family has decided to send our kids back to school because they're at very minimal risk of contracting COVID and having severe effects. Yeah, they can contract COVID, but most of the times, kids have COVID and they don't even get tested. They never even knew that they had it. That's what mostly happens. So it's our position that they're at very, very minimal risk, and for them to be masked for something that they're at very, very minimal risk of having problems with, it's a problem with us. The biggest fear I have now is something that's not being talked about very much is the loss of social interaction skills that these children are getting. Madam Speaker, when you're speaking, I have no idea what you're saying. I didn't even know that you were the one talking. That's unfortunate. You know, I want to be able to read people's faces and their body language. My business, I buy and sell horses for a living, and I need to see facial expression. I need to understand what people are interested in, what they're not. And not being able to see faces is a huge problem that is going to face our society in the future. But looking at the facts a little more in depth, the CDC website shows that over 80% of the deaths from COVID are from the elderly. This is not the population that we're talking about here. For younger population, car crashes are more deadly than COVID. And for the group that we're talking about, the under 25, the kids that are going to be in schools here, car crashes are 11 times more deadly than COVID for the group of people that we're talking about here. So statistically speaking, if you want to follow the science, we can follow the science. The kids are at a similar risk of dying of the flu. Are we going to mask for the flu? I don't think that's the direction that we want to head. So moving forward, like I said or alluded to before, I think the biggest problem that we're facing is the social-psychological effects that aren't being talked about nearly enough anywhere. You don't see it on the news, you don't see this happening. You just say, you just hear mask, mask, mask. Well, that's not, it's very troubling. Most of human interaction is done through nonverbal means. Facial expressions has so much to do with social interacting, and covering faces takes away a key element to how our children learn and interact with other people and will forever impact and change the way this generation interacts.
That's time. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crane. Our next five speakers are Mr. Tyler Longenecker, Ms. Martha Blau, Mrs. Emily Tobias, Reverend Troy Williams, and Mrs. Stephanie Harmon.
Hello.
Mr. I apologize. Mr. Longenecker, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
My name's Tyler Longenecker. My address is 246 Mount Bill Drive, Lebanon. I have a fourth grader and a kindergartner in the district and a one-year-old at home. So obviously, I went to school here and been in the community for a long time. Served as mayor of Jonestown for six years, and I've been watching the way things go in political meetings and political discourse and so forth. And I tend to think that this is very political. Like, I tend to think that this is, I'm not too myself personally worried about whether we mask up all the time, how specifically we do all that, because if you guys have the control, if the school board has the control, you can say, "Well, let's do it for two weeks and see what the number, you guys got to retain the control." I think this is a fishing expedition by our state government to find out how far that they can go. I mean, that's just my, you know, that's just my personal opinion, just cutting right to the chase. I think bottom line is, at the highest levels, I think this is a fishing expedition, and I think they want to find out what the boundaries are, okay, for whatever comes next. You guys got to protect us from what comes next. We don't know what that is, okay? You guys got to hold on to whatever control you have, because if you give it away now, you gave it away, okay? Now, look, the numbers of people out there, okay, and I respect everyone, people that are masking up and not masking up. You know, a lot of you people know me, you know, I'm pretty easy to get along with. I respect everyone, okay? I think we can all get along and disagree and agree to disagree. And let's not badger people that are doing, you know, obviously, these people came up here and they wanted to speak their mind. Let's give them the floor. But at the same time, it is political, and if you don't think it is, I think you need to wake up. And I'm not sitting at home watching Fox News all the time. I'm doing other stuff, you know, I'm busy. But I've picked up on things, and it is political, okay? That's my belief, that's my opinion, and you guys can disagree or whatever. But if you give away control now, you give away this school, it's over. I mean, it's done. That's the way I feel about it. So I think you should grasp on to as hard as you can to your decision-making power, because right now, I don't hear a lot of people complaining about Northern Lebanon School Board. I think we got a good school board. I think we got the best school board than we have in a long time, okay? But, you know, that's just all I need to say, just don't give it away, because it is political. This is a fishing expedition. They're out to see how far they can get, okay, and you're going to give it away. Just hang on to as much control as possible, okay, and I would fight against it. I think this is the biggest political miscalculation I've ever seen a politician make that we will ever see made. I think he's going down for this, okay? He's a lame duck. They're just, he's just doing whatever he wants to do just to find out what they can get away with, okay? So I don't think we should let him get away with it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Longenecker. Our next speaker is Mrs. Martha Blau. Ms. Blau, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Martha Blau. I dwell at 112 Racehorse in Jonestown. I was just going to address this Department of Health order that we got. When I first saw it and it was emailed to us and I read it, I kind of laughed, and I was kind of surprised at the response to it because we had been hearing all summer long that the school board was for parent choice, and nothing was going to change unless the school board had a vote. So you're kind of surprised to all of a sudden say, "This is what we're doing. We have no say in it." And that just doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. But as I was reading this order, I'm going to read some of the points here. So it's telling you all the reasons why you wouldn't need a face covering. If wearing a face covering while working would create an unsafe condition. So I'm thinking of the students as I'm reading through these. So I'm thinking, okay, so if they're in shop or home ec or chemistry class, okay, they wouldn't have to wear that. B, if they can't breathe, well, in my opinion, they can't breathe as well with a face mask. So there's, you know, that would be every class. What about C, when necessary to confirm the individual's identity? I thought, well, they were at the beginning of school. Half the teachers don't know the kids, half the kids don't know the teachers, especially in elementary school. When working alone, so, okay, so if they had a study, they wouldn't need a mask? And then E, this is where the ability to see the mouse is essential for communication. To me, that means every single teacher in every elementary kid, that's very important for communication. And this is G, an engaged activity that cannot be performed while wearing a mask. So for lunch, we're playing an instrument. There's two more classes that you don't have to wear a mask. And for G2, participating in a high-intensity aerobic activity during physical education class. Oh, so they don't have to wear it during gym. H, when the person is playing sports, oh, so they don't have to wear it for sports. So it's like you could go through all of these and find a reason for every single class why you don't need to wear a mask. So I'm not even sure why this order exists when he has all these exemptions, and I didn't understand how the board had this. They came out with this permission, or like, "We have to beg you to not wear a mask," all of a sudden, and it wasn't just the second half of it was saying, "Okay, you would have to agree to that. My student is at-" My student is at higher risk for COVID. But then you had all these other, they would be part of a four oh five or program and all those other, I didn't bring it. And I should have brought it with me to read all those. But it was like you were signing your life away just to say, I don't want my child to wear a mask. And it's like, some of it was legal, least there, you didn't even understand exactly what you were signing off on. I, you know, I'm for parent choice. If you want to wear a mask, if you don't want to wear a mask. And I'm not fighting for just parents who don't want their kids to wear a mask. It's going to come down the pike, you know, sooner rather than later that it's going to be something that you really believe in. And you're going to have somebody in the state or the government saying, nope, you can't do that. So we're fighting for parent choice. We're fighting for, like the other guy said, I don't know your name. But we don't want the state or the government telling us what to do. We want to keep things at the local level. And nothing personal, but I've seen many times on the school board, they're always asking the solicitor. And it's like, why is everything, well, you know, this is what the parents want, but we got to, we, it's almost like another vote. It's almost like they can override with the parents' want. And that's a little scary as well. And I just have one quote from Benjamin Franklin that I want to leave you with. Says, he who gives up freedom for a little bit of safety deserves neither. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Blau. Our next speaker this evening is Mrs. Emily Tobias. Mrs. Tobias, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Emily Tobias, one eighty Ridge Road, Greenpoint. So I'm not going to speak about science or data. I'm going to speak about what has happened in my household the last eighteen months with two of my kids that go to school here. COVID put a damper on my daughter's twenty twenty senior year here at NL. Watching her cry the day the governor shut down the rest of the academic school year. Her reality setting in that she will never walk these halls with her classmates and friends ever. Seeing her miss senior trip, traditional graduation and prom. It was also challenging for my freshman son last year. Having to follow a seven-hour bell schedule online was extremely difficult. Very hard for him to stay motivated and disciplined. My son missed school and he missed his friends. I kept giving him words of encouragement, keep it up, good work, I know this stinks. The school year is almost over, finish strong. So this year, looked promising as him as a sophomore with the mask mandate though going into effect last year, not our last week, not so much. I understand that it's equally frustrating for all of you, for the district, for the staff, as well as it is for us as parents and for our kids. So given that, I picked up my son from school today. And this is the reason I'm speaking right now. I was going to come just to kind of just show a body, show a presence here. But I'm speaking because I picked up my son and I said, will you go with me tonight? And he said, no, why would I? I'm a kid, they won't listen to a kid. And I said, and that that hit me hard for him to think that his opinion has no, no value here. So this is not parents against the district, it's the parents wanting a choice for our kids. Can we meet in the middle? Mask if you want a mask, don't mask if you don't want a mask without having an exemption form. I know there's a lot of people here who don't vaccinate their kids and they can opt out with religious beliefs or whatever. What's the difference of my vaccinated child mingling with unvaccinated kids or mingling with masked kids and mine's not? It needs to be a choice. So honestly, at this point, I'm running out of positive words for my son because he's very just, just what do I do? So as a family, we actually decided to look into two charter schools today and that we we will be exploring those options. So my son's mental well-being is more important than a ridiculous mask mandate that is only being applied to K through twelve students. This was a big deal. Why aren't we on lockdown? Why aren't we shutting businesses down again? And one more thing, I work at Moose's LZ and I come in contact with a lot of people, a lot of military who are out of this area. And the first person at my work to get the COVID wore a mask religiously every day. And it did not spread through our work like wildfire either. She quarantined, she got over it, a few other people got it, and we went on with our lives. So thank you for hearing me out. And I sincerely hope that we can all come to a compromise, that we can choose to do what's best to parent our own kids.
Thank you for your comment, Mrs. Tobias. Our next public comment this evening is Reverend Troy Williams. Reverend Williams, please state your name and address before speaking. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Troy Williams, seventy-nine Sweet Fire Lane, Lebanon. It's not my goal tonight to sort of repeat everything that's already been said. I don't think I can add anything and say it much better. However, I do want to say that being in a position of leadership myself and having had to make decisions relative to COVID for an organization, I can empathize with the heaviness that this board must feel. Please know that the entire, that this entire school district, the board, staff, teachers, students, and volunteers, as well as the parents, are continuously in my prayers, as well as my congregants' prayers, and hoping that this community continues to navigate the muddy waters of COVID. My wife and I are parents of a middle school student and also an elementary school student. Our middle school student is diagnosed with autism and is unable to wear a face covering for no more reasons. Our elementary school student suffers from anxiety and face coverings exacerbate her anxiety. While we plan to have our medical professionals complete the forms, this will take some time as some as some appointments are required. And appointments are scheduled for next week. The district insists that medical professionals complete this form. An extension should at least be offered and provided to the families and allow them enough time to get the completed and to get these forms completed and then returned by the by the medical professionals. Until these forms are completed, I will not force my children to wear masks to this school. And one question I have is what kind of recourse or discipline are the students going to face if we choose not to send our students wearing a mask while we are waiting for our medical professionals to complete these forms and return them? As it stands currently, we are required to complete these medical exemption forms and have our doctors or medical professionals complete them. But according to the act, accord, according to the order of the Acting Secretary of the Pennsylvania Department of Health directing face coverings in school entities under section four, where it says school entity obligations and and where it says that a school entity must, it says that one need only to state a medical or mental health condition, not have to have a doctor complete the form. Why are families being required to obtain a signature from a medical professional? There's at least one other public school district in this Lebanon County that is not requiring medical perfection, medical professional signature for these medical exemption forms. If you want a way out, school board, that's your way out. Just have parents sign an exemption form for those students, plain and simple, and that will solve all your problems. A question was raised about authority and how and what kind of lesson are we teaching our students when we have a school board that may or may not define or defy the authority that's above them? I say this is a perfect time to teach our students. When a student feels that one's rights are being violated, one has the right to stand up against that authority. This is an opportunity to teach our students about government, about how the government is supposed to work and what was already said about the role that each citizen plays in its government. And so I think this is a wonderful and perfect opportunity to teach our students. And before I leave, if you may, I'd like to say a prayer for you as a school board. Father, I just thank you for these wonderful people who sacrificed so much to make the make the best choices they possibly can for our school district and for our students. And Lord, I pray that you will anoint their hearts and their minds. Give them the wisdom that they so desperately need, Lord God, to continue to lead our students and this community through this most terrible time. I pray this in Christ's name, amen.
Thank you for your comments, Reverend Williams. Our last speaker of the night is Mrs. Stephanie Harmon. Mrs. Harmon, please state your name and address.
Sure.
You have four minutes.
Stephanie Harmon, Twin Creek Drive in Jonestown. So good evening, hello, everyone. First, I'd like to follow up to a request from last month's meeting regarding the virtual option. I'm not asking for it to return as a daily choice. I'm just asking that you strongly consider keeping the classes online, but to have them available for when students really should be at home but are well enough to follow along for the day. This will help students from falling behind and missing important information. Also knowing that this is an option may encourage students to stay home when they are sick. Additionally, if students have to quarantine, again, this gives them an option to stay current with their classes. And we already have the technology in place, so let's use it and take advantage of it. Secondly, in regards to masking or any other medical treatment, it should absolutely, absolutely always be the students and their families' decision, not the government's and not the school board. As you know, so many families were appreciative and truly respected the school board for keeping masks optional in the district health safety plan. In my opinion, it's not even so much about masks versus non-masking at this point. It's a really my right to make my own health decision issue. Many parents who feel masks are detrimental versus helpful may still have children who choose to wear them. Again, it comes down to being able to make those decisions for yourself and not having it mandated by the government or the school district. Also, I can attest as an immunocompromised individual, it's no one's responsibility to protect my health. It's my responsibility. I would never ask you or anyone else, especially my children, to mask up on my behalf. With the recent order provided by Governor Wolf, I realize that this adds some extra challenges to you as a school board. Also, we all realize when you ran for school board, this is probably one scenario you never anticipated. However, here we are, and now you're at a crossroads. Do you, as a board, take the more difficult path, file an injunction or other action to protect the personal rights of your students and families, to protect your rights and your family's rights to make your own personal health and medical decisions? Or do we take the easy path and remain compliant? I believe many here feel this won't end with just masks. So the time has come to take a stand now. And if you choose the more difficult path, just know that you will have the support of the Northern Lebanon families here to support you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Harmon. At this time, I would invite Dr. Messinger to give us an official update on the mask mandate.
I'm not sure that I have a ton of further information from Friday, but I did want to report on just a couple of things. One, Mr. Williams, you know, I I feel for your situation. I want to make sure that, and I want to comment on the way it is currently. Just so people understand, the exemption form, the responsibility of the parent for the exemption form currently would be to get that form in by Friday, only the parent portion of that form by Friday. Understanding that medical providers may take longer, I also want to clarify that I do not need, we do not need the doctor to say that the student may not, doesn't have to wear a mask. All we need is confirmation in some way, shape, or form of a diagnosis. For many of you, we would have that diagnosis. If you had a mask exemption last year, we are granting those without any documentation. If you have something on file for autism, that's another conversation that we would, we would take care of without that documentation. The process, and this is the update from Friday, and Brooke, you can clarify if I'm wrong. But the process, and I thought there was going to be a little more information from Pennsylvania, but I'm not sure we got that, talks about schools following their typical five oh four exemption process. And our typical process would be to have a discussion or get documentation and then have Mrs. Vastek Jones, our Director of Pupil Services, and her five oh fourteen to look at that and make decisions. So I just want to be clear in the timing of that because the timing is not critical to have the medical portion of it for Friday. Understand that you can't get into the doctor. And that's that's neither here nor there and to a lot of the conversation that we had tonight. But I wanted to clarify it for both the board and those of you that are here. As far as today, the other, the other thing I wanted to update on was today. And I I will tell you that despite many, many students who were not happy about masks, you know, and my kids are are two of those. The kids did a really good job of being respectful of each other today, of being respectful of teachers. And and I will tell you that regardless of what side you're on, you should be proud of the way students carried themselves today because they did a fantastic job in difficult circumstances coming back. And all of you in the school board should be proud of our kids for the way they handled it today. Other than that, at this point, I don't think I have any other news from PDE that is is new since the exec session on on Friday. Is there anything that you wanted to highlight?
No, I think you covered it. And I think the the great thing about the school district is your commitment to making individualized determinations of first mask exemptions, and you have a process in place that you've used before and that you'll use again. And that's really consistent and fair.
So I typically don't do an update during a committee session, but felt I needed to at least give you an update on how things went today and and information that we were waiting on on Friday that frankly was not too informative.
Thank you for that update, Dr. Messinger. The mask mandate is not officially on the agenda as a voting item. So we don't have any planned discussion session on this. But we did want to offer each board member the opportunity to respond to the mask mandate and to your comments. We will do that where one board member or each board member gets to speak one time. And we'll simply go around the table. We'll get started with Reverend Rob Fowler.
I had no idea. Two years ago, I'd need to be an epidemiologist to be on the school board. I had no idea that, um, and the last time I took a science class, the date began with a nineteen. I had no idea I need to be a lawyer to be in the school board. And no offense, I must say, Mr. Nam, I have no desire to be a lawyer. So it makes it really tough for me to know what the best thing is. So I can rest where I rest. Where I rest is I yielded my life to Jesus Christ twenty-nine years ago. And because of that, and because of that, I believe I've been a an excellent citizen of my country and of my communities. I've yielded wherever that has taken me, and that is why I'm here. I'm here because my bishop requested that I move to Ono, Pennsylvania, and I yielded to that bishop's decision. I have yielded for the past year, no matter what a family feels comfortable with. Every single funeral I have done, I have wore masks when a family asks. I have not worn masks when the family asks. And for me, it's it's a simple scriptural concept that I will be willing to yield to my authority. And and I appreciate that people are going to be bringing this order to court, and it will be challenged in court. I was one of the people that voted to limit the governor's power. I believe in limited power by individuals. But until then, I would, until the legal behaviors that be make their decisions, I would yield to their decisions.
Thank you, Reverend Fowler, and we appreciate your continued kindness and courtesy and respectfulness as we move through with these responses. Our next response is from Director Glenn Gray.
Well, I, a little closer here, can everyone hear me? Yeah, this evening has been really informative, both by by the way in which people have been able to present their their thoughts and processes. I think everyone has a very strong opinion and 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 obviously different viewpoints, but I think we've all come together to kind of give a, give the school board, and we appreciate that. Your thoughts on where you fall on this issue. My goal has always been on the school board, that education and the safety of children has always been foremost. And I'm going to continue to kind of abide by that as my guiding principles on the school board. That's it.
Thank you, Director Gray. Director Nate Urban, do you have any comment? Director Nate Urban, do you have any comment?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. People that presented on both sides, the emails, we've had well over 100 emails, and I really enjoyed and took to heart people that spoke on both sides of this situation. The way I look at it, this is a negative situation that I truly think can produce something positive in the end. I say it's negative for two reasons. One, because I, you could see it tonight here a little bit. You definitely see it throughout the country, but it, it seems to me like it's creating division. And I almost, not almost, personally, I'll try not to let you know what side I stand on, but when I, I just think it's done intentionally because of the whole divide and conquer philosophy, but I think it creates division, so that makes it a negative. And the other negative, I think, is decisions are being made for our community. Those decisions are being stripped from our actual community leaders that have been put in place to make these decisions. So that's unfortunate. That's a negative. I do think there's some positives that can, that can come out of this. One, one positive, I tell my boys, they're getting into politics now, this is a great example of why it's important to vote. Okay, because people you vote for are going to have the power, whether it's presidential vote, whether it's local government. But when you put people in power, you know, our government was voted, our government, governor was voted in. He's, you know, he's been given, possibly given this power to do this. So, you know, if you voted for him, this is what you voted for. If you didn't, you know, at least you exercised your right to vote. So that's a positive. Being able to vote, you know, it's something we're allowed to do as Americans. That's something good we can learn from this. Second positive, I think it's a great opportunity for us to learn how to listen to two differing opinions. Some opinions make me cringe, I'm not going to lie, but you know what? I, I try to listen to, not try to, I do. I listen to people with respect. Coach Ulrich talked earlier, and you know, I heard people were kind of razzing him a little bit, but I'll tell you, don't razz him too much because you don't want to mess with a wrestler. There's not too many people that Mr. Ulrich couldn't handle on his own, so. But it's a great opportunity for us to learn to listen to two different sides of an opinion, still respect each other. I don't have to agree with you, but I'm still going to respect you. Finally, getting down to the nitty gritty a little, I told my boys that they're going to be given the choice to wear masks. Okay, they both, they both chose not to. My wife and I supported that. That's fine. If they want to wear them, they can. They chose not to. I did tell them that eventually they might have to play the game. Okay, and I don't want to say the game. That's not meant to disrespect people that do want to wear masks. I want to explain myself when I say the game. When I say the game, I'm not questioning the legitimacy of COVID, okay? I understand that how serious COVID is. I understand that although it's less deadly than the flu, and we have a 99% chance of surviving it, it's still a legitimate illness. I also understand that masks can be effective, but cloth masks and throwaway masks, like a lot of people have said earlier, aren't effective. And ineffective masks that are implemented on a part-time basis of wearing them just in class, but then not wearing them outside of class, I believe Mrs. Tobias talked about some things like where you have to wear them, where you don't. Like, to me, if you want to implement masks, it needs to be an all or nothing thing. So when you don't implement them at a consistent basis, I'm not sure how effective they would be. When you don't have to wear them at large events, concerts, football games, anything that further, further illustrates why I call this the game, okay? It has nothing to do with me not thinking it's a legitimate illness. So for now, you know, I, I would love for this to be a school board issue and a school board vote. I would love to cast my vote. I'm sure you're all, I'm sure you're all on edge, wondering which way I would vote. You probably don't know, but I, I would love to do that right now. Right now, that, you know, that is kind of out of our hands, but I, I do look forward with working with the board here and, you know, the, the implementation. I, for the letter that Dr. Messinger has crafted, I think, you know, gives us a little bit of wiggle room to work. You know, do I agree with it? Do I disagree with it? I understand some of you do and don't, but it, it is a document that can help us, you know, protect ourselves a little bit, and that's, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I like to listen to Mrs. Say and other school solicitors, but I think I spoke enough, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak as well.
Thank you, Director Urban. Next, we have Director Barry Nam.
Yes, thank you. Today, somebody that I love told me that character transcends whoever's in the governor's mansion or whoever's in the White House, and that really convicted me. I am submitting out of choice to the order that has been passed down to us. I have trouble hearing when those are wearing masks. I take my mask off so that you can hear me. I'm going to put it back on. This week has been an extraordinarily difficult week for all of us, and, and I want to thank each of you that has sent us emails, those that have called, those that I've talked to in person or over the phone. I especially appreciate the kind words, the understanding words. Pastor, I appreciate the prayer especially. It's, it's especially meaningful to me. This evening, there's probably 1,000 things I would rather be talking about tonight, and probably 10,000 places I would rather be than right here. I came from my daughter's field hockey game today, and I couldn't enjoy it because I'm thinking about government orders and mask mandates, and Mr. Brewer's daughter, a freshman, scored Northern Lebanon's first goal of the field hockey season this year. It, it's, it's difficult to enjoy those things when other things take priority, and I'd rather not be doing this, but here I am. I, I chose to be here. I ran for the office, and here I am, along with all of us. I want you to know that as a board, I, I think none of us want to be in this position. Personally, from my own standpoint, I deeply, deeply resent that we have to deal with this right now due to an order from Harrisburg. But this is the hard truth of where we are right now. Two months ago, this board developed a health and safety plan that made masks optional. I supported that plan. I still support that plan. But that plan, for the time being, has been superseded by, by someone else. We have heard much from all of you. I appreciate more than you can understand your opinions, your values. I have read each and every email. I've responded to those that I can, except for those that were sent today. I want you to know that I responded to those on behalf of the entire board. And to those that I have talked to personally, I just really appreciate the conversations. As a public servant, I take very seriously our policy that states that this board is to act as an agent for the residents of this community in matters of public education. What is the will of this community? We've heard a lot of it tonight, but I can assure you that for every thought, every opinion, every idea, on one side, there's a counterpoint on the other. It is impossible for me to say what the entire will of this community is. That said, I'm always open to hearing what your thoughts are. Those thoughts are passionate. They're filled with emotion. My home has not escaped the emotion of the last two years. I have a son that graduated last year. I have a daughter that's a sophomore this year. Those emotions continue to be really strong in my home as they are in yours. And I appreciate the passion that drives each and every one of you. We've heard so much. One of the things that this board has done is we have consulted with our solicitor. We have a very, very competent solicitor. We have heard assessments of what we think the law is. We have heard that at this point, it appears to us that we likely have few options. That is not to say we have no options, and as a lawyer myself, I am constantly thinking of the options. But as a lawyer, I also am hesitant whenever a client says that they don't want to listen to me. That said, the client does direct its own course of action. I think not all questions have been resolved. I think there are issues on the margins that we can still talk about, and I hope that we, as a board, will publicly talk about. That may include a challenge. It may not. It may include some modifications, the exceptions. It may not. I don't know, but I hope that we have these conversations going forward in the public. I hope to continue that public conversation. I am open to continue that private conversation with each one of you. When I started and ran for this board, it was very important for me to be a part of the good things that this district was doing. And I deeply, deeply resent that we have been distracted from those good things. I was having a conversation today with a friend or yesterday with a friend, and the question came up, what would Jesus do in this situation? I, this is my personal conclusion. I think Jesus would probably rebuke the self-righteous, call each one of us hypocrites, then forgive us. And then probably care for the interests of the children. I only wish I knew what that was and what that would look like. The motives of each of you, I do not question. The care on this board for our children, I do not question. All I know is that this administration specifically has been put in a very difficult situation. And I am looking to support that administration in a direction that is in the best interest of this community. Above all else, I hope and I pray as well that the good things that are happening in this district will not be lost because of this situation that I believe also will pass. I thank you for your time. Sorry to ramble, but as I said, I am also a lawyer.
Thank you for your comments, Director Nam. Next, we have Director Rachel Sikelic.
I'm going to be incredibly brief because I think that you just summed up probably everything, and I think none of us want to be where we're at right now. My personal opinion on masks, to me, is irrelevant. As a publicly funded school district, we comply with all state and federal mandates because there are consequences. And to me, this one is no different. The biggest risk I see is the threat of our superintendent. A superintendent who's already done so many great things for our district. So I encourage everyone to take your fight to Harrisburg. Email, call, show up, protest. We are subject to mandates, state and federal. Hundreds of state and federal mandates over 10, 20 years. It's no different. This isn't a new discretion where our ability to govern has been stripped. We are always subject to mandates. But we have to fight against the mandates if you want to. Whether I choose to fight against it or for it is my own personal opinion, but as a school board representative, I support our administration and the difficult decision that they've had to make. And I will continue to support whether I agree with it or I disagree with it. Thank you.
First, I'd like to acknowledge.
Director Dave Clark.
Hello, everybody. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that I may not be the smartest person up here in the audience. You guys, certainly a lot smarter people than me, but the value I think I bring to the school board is I grew, I grew up in this community. You know, I, I look around, I see friends, alumni, neighbors, doctors, wrestling parents, wrestling coaches. You know, you, you guys are my people. And, and this is hard for me, and I understand why it's hard for everybody else. I, I tend to agree with you guys. It's time that we start to take back some control, and I don't know what that looks like. And guys, I, I, hey, hold up. Hold up, hold up, please. It's not an easy decision, guys. It's not. And I don't, and I felt so bad even saying this because I know some of these other guys want to, and they're just trying to make things, you know, as smooth as can be. It's about kids, it's about public education, and we're not politicians. We're not Donald Trump. We're not Joe Biden. Local politicians like us are flying underneath the radar to not make big issues. All right? It's supposed to be about the kids. So I shut up, I shut up, I shut down Facebook and social media because I wanted to concentrate on my relationship with you guys. All right, I wanted to block that stuff out and focus on what really matters. And that's where I think the state can't make decisions because they don't know about our community. They don't know what our people want. So please have some grace with my, my, my school board members up here that might not say what you like to hear. I'm a little different, though. I, I, I'm, I'm okay with sticking my neck out there a little bit to fight, to, to, to kind of, I don't know what that looks like either, guys. I don't. And hopefully, you know, time will tell. We'll be able to learn off other school districts and, and hear other people's opinions and, and maybe, maybe find some pushback. I don't have a magic wand. Guys, this happened so fast. I, I drove to school, what, Monday or Tuesday, thinking how awesome it was to watch my kid's face and see, and see his friends smiling at the bus stop. And then those orders came, and then Labor Day weekend while everybody's trying to open up school. Biggest week of the year. And everybody wants answers, and they want them now, and I get it, guys. It's, it's information age, but guess what? They're doing the best they can do with the information they get. And you guys see the news too. It's horrible. The information that comes out of Harrisburg is absolutely horrible. So please give us a little bit of a break. But if others have, want, want to stick their neck out, I'm willing to do it too. I think you guys are asking us to lead. And the community I know, the direction that you want us to pursue is keep looking for options, and I, I think that's what I want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Clark. Next comment is from Director Stacy Murray.
I could echo pretty much what all of my board members said here. I appreciate each one of you. I appreciate every email. I have read every email word for word that we've received. I believe we all have. I don't know that anybody hasn't been reading the emails that have been coming through. I appreciate every perspective. I had somebody recently ask me, not in regard to this, but I work for a ministry organization, and they asked me, what is your pain point? I hear a lot of pain from the folks that are emailing us, children who are struggling, parents who are struggling, kids who are not enjoying the school setting the way that it has been today. It, it is challenging. I mean, it is, it is hard. It is. We've not been in this situation before, and so asking for time and grace and direction, the prayers of this community, I think, mean the world to each and every one of us. We want to be able to make the right decision, and I'm not so sure that that is completely, completely clear and, and direct. Maybe, maybe it should be. But there's, there are certainly challenges, and, you know, we want to be able to support what is, what is best for each and every one of you, and to be able to do that is a challenge. So continue, keep the prayers coming, keep the emails coming, keep the direction coming. And I certainly want to work with each and every one of you to find a solution that can be what we should do for, for our district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Murray. Our next comment is from Director Mike Marlowe.
Thank you. So let me start off by saying thank you to everyone who took the time to give board feedback. Over the past few days, via email, phone calls, as others have said, we've received hundreds of, of emails, phone calls. And in my opinion, that feedback that we, that we get from the public to make informed decisions for public schools should be one of the strongest guiding forces for a board. And yet, my experience thus far on the board, my experience thus far on the board is that we do not get enough. A school board is intended to represent the desire of the public while balancing what we believe to be the best for the district, including protecting us from lawsuits. Before I share my personal thoughts and direction on this topic, I want to state the obvious. We all are products of our life experiences, and how we see this topic is no different. We believe what we believe because of what we have already been through in life. This is why people in the same fields with the same training, doctors, nurses, et cetera, can have opposites, opposite opinions on this topic right now. For that reason, I respect, I respect that all sides of this believe that their approach is the right one, and it's personal to them. So no matter where you stand on this, I believe that you do believe that you're doing the right thing. If you know me personally, If you know me personally, you likely, likely know that I'm a general rule follower and I respect the authorities. I think that's what holds this country together. I've taught my kids to do the same thing, even when it's not comfortable. What that doesn't mean to me, though, is that you never question, why do we do this? And if needed, you work to change what you believe is right while you do your best to respect and follow the authorities. My personal opinions aside, the facts are that not following this order has potential legal ramifications for the district and its employees. And following it could have legal and cost ramifications. It's a lose-lose situation that we've all been put in. I wish the board could snap their fingers and change that, but the real fight for something like this is in Harrisburg right now. Not following it could also have health and safety implications. And yet, following it could have health and safety implications, mental health, breathing issues, et cetera. Again, it's a lose-lose situation. This board has been put in a no-win situation. If we believe that masks will work, then getting 2,000-plus students to wear effective masks effectively is a Herculean task and will impact teachers' ability to deliver the best outcomes for all 2,000-plus kids. If we do follow this order, we could be setting an unrealistic expectation that kids will not get the virus, not spread it, and no one will get sick. That's just not true. The risks are real on both sides. Cases will likely continue to go up with or without masks. We know that when kids step outside the buildings, the masks are off and they are congregating with other kids inside and outside the buildings. We saw it last year with U Sports and we'll see it again. Along the same lines, thinking that we will not have students experiencing new mental health challenges, breathing disorders, or illnesses such as bacterial pneumonia is an unrealistic expectation. My family has experienced each of these this past year. It's been a difficult year for the Marlowes, as I'm sure it's been a difficult year for many of you. This could also have financial implications for the district. Based on our decisions or lack thereof, we could see enrollment changes that impact state and federal funding to this district. We could also see added costs for charter school fees. They increased approximately one, they increased approximately $1 million since COVID. Each student that goes to charter schools costs the districts approximately $12,000, with some costing as much as $27,000. This is an obligation we have because of mandates. I know that this board desire, I know that this board's desire is that kids that live in this district come to NL. We love this school. We currently have approximately 125 kids in various charter schools for various reasons, some of which are due to the mask mandates last year. This number could potentially balloon if parents do not have some say in this process. My earnest prayer at this point is that we can use this event that we've all gone through to be stronger. However, I believe we must start to move forward and get out of this limbo for recovery and healing to really start. Unfortunately, the start, starting line just got moved again last week. I could list lots of facts, quote unquote, reliable sources on masks, both for and against it. But the reality is that we, as a nation and a world, have spent almost no effort or resources on legitimate mass studies for kids in school settings. I love to base my business decisions on reliable data, but when you look for it on this topic, it's all over the board. If you read CDC documentation on masks, it can be just as confusing. It is mind-numbing to me that this has become such a political issue that has even infected the healthcare community. Healthcare workers that intend to help protect their patients are being told they are not allowed to provide specific notes exempting them from masks, even if it's potential, even if it's potential unhealthy situation for them. We are asking parents to jump through hoops for legitimate situations. As it relates to the exemption form, I feel like the physician's requirements should be adjusted for two reasons. First is that parents are going to be challenged to get anything under the current circumstances for real known situations. This is putting kids at risk. I know that Gary and his team will do their best to sift through these situations and make good decisions. They're already doing this, but they shouldn't have to. And some parents just won't have the resources or be able to provide enough evidence to make it work. We are then putting that child at risk. Second, and even more important in my opinion, is that none of us have ever gone through an event like this before. None of us. And so the impacts on students, both short-term and long-term, are not clear. And educators, board members, doctors, et cetera, can only make an educated guess on the impact to students, short-term or long-term. However, I'd like to make a case that parents and guardians know their children best and can see the impacts of the events we are going through and can see the impacts that the events we are going through have on their kids, including the impact of wearing masks. My wife and I have drag it through this. My wife and I have five children that have gone through this event since March, since March 13th of 2020. That date is now seared in their minds. And each of them have reacted to it differently. Some have been able to just go with the flow and wear a mask even though they don't want to. While another got seriously sick and developed breathing problems from wearing the mask. And others seen mental health issues worsen. There's not a doctor out there. There's not a doctor out there that can sit with the child and see what the impacts of a six-to-eight-hour day of school is having on them. Or be there when they get home to assess things. Parents see it every day. And at this point, in an event that, again, none of us have ever gone through, we've never put kids in masks for this period of time in this setting. I think we should trust parents to make the best decisions for each of their children. I would bet in many cases, you will have parents that make different decisions for different children in the same family based on their individual situations. Again, I think we need to trust parents to make the best decision for their kids. I'd ask the board to at a minimum, consider discussing changes to the exemption form that allows for greater parent feedback and reduces the risk for school, for the school from a legal standpoint. Parents know their situations best. I intend to make, I intend to make a few motions under the new business portion of the meeting as we get there later tonight to formally add topics to the agenda for next week so that we're sure to continue to talk about this as this develops. Finally, I want to read, read you an excerpt from PSBA, which is Pennsylvania School Board Association, which advocates for us on a daily basis and we are members of, each one of us. In response to the following statement by Governor Wolf, and here's the statement, "Local school boards deliberate deliberations about masking policies were tainted by an aggressive nationwide campaign, spreading misinformation about mask-wearing and pressuring and intimidating school districts to reject mask policies." In response to what, what I just read, the PSBA said that the local decisions were made after hard work conducting discussions and seeking community input. And while the PSBA said it would, said it would remind local districts of legal obligations that we have related to the directive and urging them to consult with their local district solicitor on compliance, the school board, the school board said the state shouldn't be implementing statewide mandates on mask, on the masking controversy. They went on to say, "We are confident that local school boards remain the best decision-makers for their communities," said Nathan Maines, PSBA's chief executive officer. "Our members remain committed to the health and safety of their students and staff. And while they have welcomed the expertise and guidance of state and federal agencies, they, school boards, are in the best position to evaluate and promptly respond to ever-evolving conditions in their own communities." Someone mentioned earlier, we are not Philadelphia County, we are not Pittsburgh, we're not even Tioga County. We, we are northern Lebanon. And again, what's happening here should be under the control of this school board. And I believe that wholeheartedly. Oh, and my statements like a star them. I appreciate all the feedback we've received. I've read every email and letter. I even had some letters delivered to my house in person from kids asking for the choice. I respect your opinions and decisions related to this. I'd ask the others to do the same. Those that do not agree with you, I'd ask that you respect them as we walk through this. I'd also ask that you let the board continue to do, to find a solution for this. It may take us a little bit of time, but I believe in the pub, I believe in public education and feel like walking away from this right now will create failures for, for future generations. We need to fix the systemic challenges. And as PSBA stated, school boards are in the best position to evaluate and promptly respond to where they live. The answer for northern Lebanon is not the same answer as schools in other areas. There are, there are local school boards because we, we are not all the same. I'd ask the other members of the board to continue to have conversations about these very important topics. And I'll bring up the specific items to be added to the agenda when we get to the new business section. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Marlowe. I'm not quite sure where to begin, other than to recognize that I think all of us up here on the stage and out in the audience, we're tired. We're frustrated. We feel pain. This past 18 months has taken a lot out of everyone, I think, regardless of where you stand on the mask issue. If we look in the news, if we look in the obituaries, everywhere in our society, it seems that there is controversy and strife and division. And this is certainly contributing to one of the, to that turmoil. I feel that fatigue as a parent and I feel that fatigue as a board member. But I also feel that fatigue in a different way as a scientist. I spent six years at Hershey Medical Center, Penn State College of Medicine, earning my PhD in microbiology and immunology. I worked in a department of primarily virologists and immunologists. And I love science and I love learning about science. And SARS-CoV-2 is on one hand fascinating scientifically, but as a human, it is heartbreaking because it is dividing our community. It is taking parents away from children, taking grandparents away. I think that this issue has become far too politicized because it is a public health issue. I look at this as a scientist, not as a Republican or Democrat. When we're talking about public health issues, while I recognize and appreciate my personal rights as a parent and your personal rights as a parent, my choices affect you when we're talking about public health and your choices affect me. If I was sitting on the stage without a mask, if I had measles and people in the audience were not vaccinated, many people would leave this room and go on to get infected. Measles is that contagious. My choices affect you, your choices affect me. I hear a lot about how we need to come together and I agree. But that's especially for the health of one another. If we truly want to come together and look out for one another, then that includes wearing a mask. Your choices and my choices can affect somebody's child who has an undiagnosed medical condition. Your choices and my choices can affect if somebody loses a, a parent or grandparent. For me, this is not about my rights or your rights. It's about coming together to get through this as a school district, as a state, as a country and as a world. Northern Lebanon doesn't exist in a bubble. Pennsylvania doesn't exist in a bubble. If we have rapid spread of the virus in our school, that's going to affect other schools. If other schools have rapid spread of the virus, that affects us. So we don't exist in our own rights when we're talking about public health. We do know that masks are effective. Studies have shown masks are effective. When you go into the hospital, if you get a, a surgery, your physician and everyone in that room will wear a mask. That is to protect the, the other person. Excuse me, I am speaking. Excuse me, I would like to finish. Would you like to continue to sit here through the rest of the meeting? I do have faith in God.
Ladies and gentlemen, the final board member has an opportunity to speak. Please listen to her finish her comments and we'll move on to the action items. Thank you.
Thank you. We do know that masks are effective because everyone working in healthcare is wearing them currently to protect other people. Me wearing a mask does more to protect you than it does to protect me. Of course, there is some protection even from a cloth mask, but the larger protection is to protect the other person. If we truly care about the other person, then we will wear a mask to protect them. Because of that, because we know that we are infectious or can be infectious before we have symptoms, it is important that we're all wearing masks to prevent the spread of the virus unknowingly. I have heard a lot tonight about how our children are at lower risk of severe, lower risk of death and lower risk of severe disease. And that is true. But children are not at no risk. Last Saturday, 100, the, the current update is that in the past week, 180,000 kids were diagnosed with COVID in the US. We currently have a 2% hospitalization rate for kids. That means for every 100 kids that are diagnosed with COVID, two of them will end up in the hospital. We have about 2,000 kids here at northern Lebanon, I think. If all of our kids eventually become infected here, if we follow those statistics, that's about 40 kids in the hospital. Yes, we can play the odds. Yes, most families won't be dealing with that. Yes, we can play the odds. Yes, most families won't be dealing with that, but somebody will. It could be your child and it could be mine. It could be my child's best friend or yours. I believe that we wear a mask to prevent that from happening. As I tell my students, nothing in biology is a hundred percent. There is always exceptions. A mask is not a hundred percent effective, but it is effective. If me wearing a mask prevents one person from getting sick and potentially going to the hospital, then that's what I'm gonna do. I recognize that I could be infectious and not know it. And I don't want to, want that on my conscience. I don't want to know that I am potentially sending somebody into the hospital and potentially causing somebody to lose a loved one. It is more traumatizing for a child to be hospitalized with COVID than it is to wear a mask. The data is accumulating and we're beginning to understand what COVID infection does long term. If we continue in schools unmasked, we will have entire generations of kids getting COVID and potentially suffering long-term consequences. We know that COVID is able to spread to many different areas of the body. It goes to the brain, it goes to the kidneys, it goes to the heart, and it does cause long-term effects in those areas. We don't yet understand those long-term effects. I don't want to be responsible, at least, well, not that I'm responsible. I don't want to know that I didn't do everything I could do to prevent long-term effects for kids. When we have the option to prevent any child from dealing with these long-term consequences, I think that's what we do. I've heard a lot about how we can go in public spaces without a mask, but why should our kids wear them in school? And I appreciate that. It, it does seem very ironic that we're in that place right now. But I'll tell you, when I go into public space, I'm wearing my mask. I think the, a, a key point to make regarding that, that we can go out into public spaces, but not into school, there's two things about that. It is your choice if you go to a sporting event. It is your choice if you go to an amusement park. Those are not necessary things. Coming into a public school is every child's right. Having an in-person education is every child's right. Our kids under twelve cannot be vaccinated. Vaccination reduces the risk of severe disease. We're not vaccination reduces the risk of severe disease and our kids under twelve are at risk because of that. If this virus spreads rapidly in kids under twelve, we are, we risk seeing an entire generation of kids with long-term effects from COVID. I was just listening to a podcast this, uh, today from a physician in, uh, at Columbia University Medical Center. And he was talk, discussing a study and they were talking about the long-term effects of COVID in kids. Kids three months out after the virus, twenty percent of them have, approximately twenty percent of them have fatigue. Many of them have muscle ill, muscle aches. Many of them have headaches. I can't remember all the statistics. They were all around at the twenty percent range. The bottom line is we don't understand the long-term effects, but we do have the opportunity to prevent some of these infections. I think it is our responsibility to do that. And I think that concludes my. All right, moving forward. The minutes shall note that public notice was given for this meeting, for the meeting in accordance with Act eighty-four of nineteen eighty-six. Notices and advisements of these meetings will carry the intent that limited business may be conducted on any scheduled meeting date. We are now moving to item seven. Uh, these are items for board action this evening. Uh, we will go through those having Dr. Messinger discuss them and have one board vote at the end.
I, I'll do the two. Do you want, you want me to do the two construction? You want me to go through all of seven? It's everything if I go through all of seven, which is fine. Okay, we'll go through everything. Uh, the first seven point one is a change order. Uh, if you remember Crabtree talking about the meetings that we had with the different uh, the low bar and electric and HVAC and so on, plumbing. Uh, we had some things that we felt post-bid that we could save some money on. And those things totaled three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars savings and the committee men talked about that today and is recommending to accept those change order credits. Seven point two. We decided that it seemed silly for the change order committee not to be able to approve credits because we didn't think that the board was going to be concerned about saving money. Uh, and we had initially put a forty thousand dollar limit on the change orders ability. We wouldn't like to change that to accept credits in any amount. Obviously, we'll keep the forty thousand dollars if it's, if it's an expense. Uh, seven point three is our list of substitutes. Uh, the, the next several are, are personnel items that have come up between our August and September meetings. Uh, we have several leave requests due to health reasons, due to babies. Seven point five, we have several resignations that have occurred over the past since our last board meeting and all of those are listed there. Uh, seven point six with, uh, with leaves and with resignations comes employment. And we have all of those listed for you as well there. Uh, seven point seven, each year at this time, we grant tenure. Uh, this year it is to Kelsey Tiffany. Uh, we also have staff advancements at this point. Seven point eight for academic credits uh, that are in accordance with our CBA. Uh, and seven point nine, due to a leave, we appointed a new mentor for Autumn Deck and that is listed for you as well.
Are there any questions on those items?
I just have, uh, I'm trying to find it now. There was one item that I know that I need to abstain from. And I will submit that abstention to Mrs. Martin this week. I cannot find it now. But there is one that I will have to abstain from. I will update the, the board this week. Thank you.
Is that for these or is that on the consent calendar?
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. I didn't wanna, didn't wanna lose that, um, critical opportunity. Thank you. Yes.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve items seven point one through seven point nine?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Next, we move on to item eight. These are items for discussion this evening, items proposed for the consent calendar to be voted on next week.
Yes, and if there's any questions in the meantime between now and next week, I can, I can get back to you. But anything, anything you'd like more information on? Our first three items under eight are the approval minutes, the student activity count and cash dispersments, which are normal items. Did I do the whole calendar? Did you? Okay, with budget and finance, number nine. We have the agreement with Tredso Consulting Services. That's our E-rate for the year that we do. That's our reimbursement for a lot of the technology things that we do. Uh, and then also, and I had emailed you information about this today and I'm sure, or yesterday, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to read it. Uh, but that tax waiver request from Sharon Menonite fellowship.
Are there questions on those items?
Will we be able to vote on the, those items separately?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you'd like to move any to discussion, we can do that as well.
I, I would like to move the, um, item B, the tax waiver request to discussion, please.
Okay, we'll do that. And in the meantime, if you have any questions, let us know. We'll try to prepare. Uh, Mrs. Martin is here somewhere too, if there's any questions specifically right now. Did any, did anyone have any right now or did we wait till next week as well?
I, I just wanted to ask if there was any clarification. And you don't have to give this tonight, but just if there would be any clarification on the, the amount of land that is being exempt. I know like if it's under five, then they don't have to go through that, but if it's because it's ten, they have to ask for the waiver. I just, go ahead.
Yes.
I know. So if it's over ten. They would have to waiver. Two acres off. Up to five. But because it's five acres, it falls where it requires, you have to do back taxes. And if they back taxes only higher one hundred and eighty-five acres, that's why they're not still paying.
However, we can, it, it, we, we're, we're going to not ever get those five acres worth of money, tax money. However, the back clean and green, however, we would still, the hundred eighty is still would be, if they did anything in the future, the same rules would apply as what Mrs. Martin.
So, so a follow-up to that, then we are, if we were to waive it, we are not permanently waiving that one hundred and eighty acres.
That's correct.
Okay.
Leanne, is that, can you confirm? Yeah.
Does, does this open up any kind of precedent though, as far as, you know, we've done it here, you know? When, when is it okay to do it? When isn't it okay to do it? I mean, it's, it's a, certainly a noble thing what they want to do with the building of the school, et cetera. But I, you know, I just kinda wanna know what, you know, down the road, somebody's gonna say, well, I have five acres and I want to give it to something else and, you know, where do we stop on this?
I think the board.
It does really help the farm community. I know my sister-in-law has a farm and it's allowed her to keep her farm in retirement that she would not have if it wasn't for Clean and Green. And if we're gonna start parcelling stuff off, it is a concern for me anyway, as far as where, where does it end?
I think the board, and I will ask you again, even though, you know, um, I think the board gets to vote on each individual case. Um, I would say factors to keep in mind would be profit versus nonprofit, certainly the amount of land and what's being used for. Um, and the, uh, in, in this particular case, I think they're asking because I don't think they have the ability to pay that. Uh, they have a situation, if you, if you had a chance to read their letter, they have a situation where they're trying to, to do some growth and, and, uh, they're limited in their choices. They, they're trying to keep their church by their cemetery um, where they have former members that, that are buried there. But each case would be individual based on, you know, what their specific circumstances are. I don't think there'd be a precedent that we'd have to approve future ones.
No, the only precedent that the board would have to contend with is explaining to one taxpayer or non-taxpayer or the other as to why you granted or didn't grant the exemption. And that's why it's important to be consistent, at least relative to the factors that you think are important in granting or denying an exemption because in a year you may have a similar, but not exactly the same circumstances request. It could be another nonprofit, but not a church. It could be not a church, but a synagogue. Um, so you always wanna make sure that you're able to take whatever factors were important and apply them consistently moving forward because you're dealing with your members of your community.
I, I don't wanna belabor the point, but, um, maybe for next week, if we could get an explanation of the specific conditions we might be able to put on that five acres. I understand from, um, Mrs. Martin that there, there may be some conditions. I also have a clarifying question. I understand that this is an up or down yes or no vote. If we vote to waive the one eighty, that's the end of the story. We cannot also require payment on tax of that five acres, can we?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Martin, just to clarify, I remember reading about this several weeks ago and I'm not sure if I'm remembering it correctly or not. When I was looking at the exemptions for paying back the taxes, if it was two acres or less, it was only exempt if, if it was for, to build a house for that person. Um, not to remove two acres and sell it. Am I correctly remembering that? That's how I understood it. Do we know how long this property was in Clean and Green? Okay, uh, all right. Uh, so we are only waiving a certain amount of the taxes, correct? For all the years it was in Clean and Green? Okay. Right. So we are, they're asking for, they would be paying taxes for the entire tract for the past, I, seven years maybe, even though cleaning, it was in Clean and Green potentially longer. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I get a little concerned just touching into Clean and Green and I understand that this will go base person by person, taxpayer by taxpayer that makes a request, but I do think we set a precedent. Um, I, I mean, it's a church. I understand it's a church. I respect it, but there's a separation of church and state. So I also understand that we need to treat each taxpayer that comes in equally as we treat that church. So I just think that if this is a decision the board makes, well, I won't be on the board probably in the next couple of months. I don't think we'll get another request. I hope those of you who are on accept the fact that this is something, if you vote yes for, that you are saying you will agree to any taxpayer who requests five acres from Clean and Green for certain circumstances.
Is this, I think I know the answer. They're not gifting this five acres. Isn't the, what's the sale price? Is it one forty or, I thought I saw that. Oh, that's right. But yeah, no, uh, okay, yeah, just, it just seems to me, I know we've voted on these things before with Clean and Green and we voted no, and I definitely understand why we do. And even though it's for a good cause, I just, if you're going to enroll in Clean and Green, I think it's kinda like if you're going to preserve your farm.
you need to realize that you're, you know, you're going to be willing to give up the benefits of being able to subdivide or stuff, but that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Yeah, if there's any further questions or even to reiterate your questions, email them to us. We'll have that ready for next week and we'll move that to discussion. Okay. We have, I think we're on 10 buildings and grounds, letter A. We'll have dollar amounts for the, for commissioning services for the elementary school and also for the testing and balancing for the elementary school. Approved the agreement with the quality assurance plus and the amount of 236,745 for testing and inspection services for the elementary school. And then there's a, an application for use of facilities for the Jonestown Dance Studio in December with the snow makeup date listed there as well. Number 11, any questions on 10? Number 11, extracurricular aid, approved Doug White's detention monitor. And I emailed you about this, and if you have questions about this, this is another one. Approved boys volleyball as an annual school sport. We did have a title nine check with Stock and Leader. They did recommend that at some point we would add probably a girls' sport to give more opportunities. Our participation rate right now is higher for males than it is for females. So something to help boost our females. Suggestion from Stock and Leader was possibly look at since we have girls volleyball to maybe add a middle school program, but I also know, and I mentioned it in my email, that there are some girls in our youth wrestling program, and that is a very growing sport. That, uh, girls are starting to wrestle and there is currently not a PI double A girls. Just girls against girls. However, you start to see them at some of the wrestling matches. Dave, you might know more about that.
Yeah, I always see girls come up through the youth program and then there's nowhere for them to go and they put in that hard work and that's their passion. But then once they get to youth, it's, I mean, to high school, it's kind of like just riding the coattails of the boys team. They just want to like get a practice in or something like that, but they really don't have any chance to compete underneath our school banner.
Yep. So that's an option as well. Spring 2022 high school musical production is listed and I emailed you about that. You may have had a chance to read the beekeeping project proposal from FFA. That was, that was attached to the agenda. We have a wrestling invitation to Hampton, Virginia in January. Also a request from the environmental science class to travel to Cape Henlemann. That's an annual trip. And then Mr. Robert Bayshore is, is head softball coach. Any questions about extracurricular?
Real quick, I'm a big fan of the beekeeping. Do we know where those hives would be?
Yeah, we're looking at, last I heard, down by that netting area across the, the lane in that area down there, is my understanding.
Gary?
Yeah.
I have a question on C. It doesn't say the title of the musical, maybe I missed.
It is in the attachment and, and that was a request. It's, it was, it was any, it's, you, you got me. You got me. It was supposed to be a surprise for the kids. Now, now they may have had their meeting today.
I'm game. Up, yeah, okay. I don't want to ruin it for anybody. Okay.
If you look hard enough, even the kids can find it. However, they were going to surprise them. They may have done that today, actually. But it, remember, we don't vote officially until next Tuesday on it, so. All right, number 12, the instructional time template. I am applying for that just in case we have, would have to go asynchronous this year or virtual this year. Want those days to count rather than extending the school year into the end of June. Prefer to, to have that as an option. And then our annual affiliation agreement with Alvernia is there. There are no items for 13. And then 14 is your annual PSBA elections, and I believe Pat has prepared item for you to vote on, and I believe that's, that's it for the consent calendar.
And I just want to mention for the PSBA elections, each person has a ballot. And please make sure that you fill that ballot out tonight or get it to her, you know, in the next day or so. Because, uh, she will tally that and put those names together and that those names are what we will vote on next week.
We have to approve the consent counters. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I lost my mind for a second. 15 is informational items. Those are assignments that were moved toward the end here that I think I've emailed you about the majority of the bigger ones there, but some assignments and, and Director Nom, you actually don't have to vote, it's just an informational. Also, a social work student will be interning with Mrs. Klein. We have a church request now. Board, board policy actually, right now nonprofits do not need to be board approved. However, I'm, I'm trying to keep them on there as informational. And so the church request to use Fredericksburg Elementary on Sundays for their service. It's a growing church in Fredericksburg. And then the appropriate rates will be applied in our fee schedule. And they would be beginning that this coming Sunday, actually. And then we have also a need for someone to serve in the Lebanon County area vocational school authority. I believe they look at the audit every year. And Joanna Beaver used to do that, however, she is unable to do it. So we're going to need somebody to do that. If you know someone who wants to and loves looking at audits, send them my way.
Is there any new business for discussion this evening?
Okay. All right, so I have two items here that I want to, want to get on. Just get to them here again. Okay, so, so I'd like to, I want to make sure we have these on the board for discussion next week. So I, I'd move to add a discussion review agenda item to consider changes to the mass exemption form that allows for greater parent input. I'm not asking for a specific change at this point. I'm asking for us to have that as a discussion. Look at options, make sure, you know, from a legal standpoint, you know, we're not putting you, Gary, administration, other folks, you know, in harm, but I think there's some movement in that that perhaps we could, we could discuss. So, so I'd move to, to add a discussion and review agenda item to consider changes to the mass exemption form.
So any addition to the agenda requires a second to that motion and it requires a majority of all board members present to add it to the agenda. Before you make that second on his motion, just be advised that relative to considering options on exemption forms, it's my recommendation, we have the discussion in executive session, so I can cover your legal options before you have that discussion in public.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Yeah, it's a real call.
In terms of discussion, I would just offer very quickly that I support that. I think, I think we have not had in my mind sufficient time to really consider all of the factors that have, that have come into play since the order. I know we had an excellent executive session, but I would like to have some discussion in public about what those options may be.
So we will, correct me, we'll have an executive session prior to this being discussed next week because I don't want to discuss this until we do that.
That's my recommendation. I haven't seen your final forms. I mean, I think I know which ones you're using, but I want Gary to send me exactly what you're using. I can review that process. We can discuss options and then we can talk about that in executive sessions if you can make an informed choice.
Thank you.
Just so I understand, in that executive session, are, will we be able to suggest real changes to it, or do we do, can we do something like that ahead of time?
You should give your suggestions to Gary ahead of time. I can almost guarantee you, your suggestions I have seen. I've seen every version of every form, probably 25 different versions over the last week. So I think I'm familiar with all the options. So giving feedback is great. I certainly recognize the question about permitting parent declarations to have a greater role in this process and understanding the balance with requiring medical information. I can better detail kind of what that analysis looks like on an individualized basis. So sure, I, I would send some of your baseline suggestions, but I don't think you need to do an exhaustive analysis because you will find as many forms as you find ways to consider those options. So I'm pretty familiar and we can have a hardly discussion on it.
Yep. No, I appreciate that. And I think, Gary, you, you gave a little bit of clarity tonight to the public in terms of how that might work. I, I think the, one of the reasons I want to have the discussion and maybe adjust as what you gave, I don't think reflects the form. So someone gets that form and it's, it seems daunting to, to try to do what the form says. And, and, you know, I think we want to, we, we want to protect people. We want to protect you. And we want to give parents a little bit of say in this. And I do believe, I do believe the majority are going to do the right thing in this situation, not try to misuse that, because I know that's, I know that's the risk. But, but I also believe that, you know, some of these parents just do not have the opportunity to, to get that doctor's advice or, or whatever it is, to be able to then make a good case for it to be reviewed. So, so that's my point. I, I want to make sure we, the forms is as clear as can be and, and we're, we're trying to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is.
I'll again wait to comment until after exec session, but there's definitely more discussion to that because it sounds as if you want to forego the five or four plan that we currently are following.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that I do. I want to have discussion around it. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, we heard a lot of feedback tonight from parents about different situations. And I want to make sure that, that we're sure that we're doing what's, what's best on, on all sides of that. And, and we've not, we, the, the exec session was very informative, but to be fair, it wasn't really an exec session. We, we were, we were consuming more than, than we were really interacting and challenging because this thing happened as, as Director Klein said, it happened so fast that my head was spinning. And, you know, Gary's sending out info and we're, we're trying to consume it. That exec session was very, very informational, very good. But, but it was, it was drinking from a fire hose and, and now we've heard more. Now we've seen a little more. We're seeing examples out there. So I'd like to have, have a good discussion around that.
I think that's, that's perfect. I totally understand where you're coming from. We haven't even gotten into all the options. As far as the process works, just to be really clear, Gary's communications that went out incorporated what we recommended, which is that grace period process. So a student who's in an exemption process gathering their information, they can remain unmasked in the school setting. They're given the benefit of the doubt. So if anyone asked that question, wondered that question, we're working with individuals on an individualized basis.
So explain this process now. We are now voting? And it has to be unanimous?
What you're just voting on is to add some items for discussion review on next week's agenda. We're also going to be having an executive session to discuss options on the exemption form. The requirements to approve something to get added to the agenda is we just need a majority of directors present to approve it to be added to the agenda, simply for discussion, not even for action.
So, all right, because from my viewpoint, what we discussed in executive session, although it's not what everybody wanted, I thought was based on pretty good legal precedent and, 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 and protecting the school district from any of the things that could happen if you do not follow this. So readdressing it, I think is a nice thing to do, you know, because people want it to be readdressed. But I think that, that I'm just worried that we, we are going to now open up a can of worms by deciding to, to make some changes that could undermine the, the authority within, and not really authority, but the, the way that the school district is looked at by students. When they look at teachers and they look at other people, if they can just come in, it's almost like, although on a much bigger, bigger platform, when I get a, a student giving me a, a note that says I was sick, that I was sick yesterday and the day before they told me they were going to a water park. And, but it's that eroding of, well, I don't have to really, I'm not accountable to anybody else. I can just write whatever I want. So I'm probably going to vote no on this. And Mike, I, I appreciate, you know, what you're trying to do. I, I'm just maybe a little more cautious on my way out the door here in a couple of months. And I just, I just want to make sure that the school district is well protected from other repercussions that we might not see.
If, if I may, I.
Go ahead.
What, what I think Director Marlowe is trying to accomplish is that information was, was more one way. We didn't really get to see what everyone else was doing around us and ask poignant questions. You know, things are changing so fast. I think it's just an opportunity to revisit it. And, and I, I like that idea. Like I said earlier, the timeline of those events was, was so fast. We really didn't get to digest much of what was going on. And now, now I think would be a good time to, to revisit it as well.
I think what bothers me the most is like I hear, you know, we're hearing from a large group of people. We have 2,000 students, 2,000 plus. We might have gotten, I mean, phone calls. I don't know how many phone calls you personally got. I don't know how many letters were delivered to you. But we got around 102, 110 emails. That's not the majority. Today, my son witnessed kids waving these papers around like freedom plaques. They were going to take them home and they're not wearing a mask. So while I would like to believe that only these severe cases that we're hearing about, which by the way, if they're that severe, their doctor's going to say they have this condition. They don't have to say you can't wear a mask. We've already met in the middle. To me, that was meeting in the middle. Because I would like a doctor to say you need a mask. So meeting in the middle is the district allowing them to just say, look, yeah, he has anxiety, he has asthma, he has COPD, he has whatever he has, and then the district can put that into a plan. We support that plan. We've decided to support that plan. I think backtracking, I agree with, with Glenn is, is scary to do right now because of the climate. And I, I mean, I understand wanting to discuss it because it feels as if we discussed it in closed doors and got very sound information and the public was not allowed to hear that, but that is unfortunately what happens in a school board setting sometime with executive session. So I would be inclined to also vote no.
I think this discussion is the reason that we need to have the discussion. And again, this vote today is just to put it on the agenda where this discussion should occur.
Yeah, I, I am not suggesting it will be changed. I'm not putting out there what is. There's just so much changing around us right now that if we, if next week we come to this and say, hey, we're not discussing it because we decided not to put this on the agenda. I'm, I'm a little embarrassed for the public that we're just not, it, it's a tough topic. I don't like this at all. But, but I think we have to keep talking about it. We, we may, we may come out and say exactly what we have is exactly what we need and what Gary, you know, how Gary has described it, works perfectly. It protects us, all of that. I, I, I'm just saying, look, there's a, a lot can change in between now and then and, and I'd like to make sure we at least have it on there so that it is, it is a discussion. And I think it means a lot to the community to see that we are still working through it. I, I was impressed with, you know, we, we had some, we had some rough emails on both sides that, that, you know, I wanted to just kind of throw away that, that they That, that, you know, I wanted to just kind of throw away that, that they were yeah, they were emotional, they, they weren't understanding perhaps. But the majority of what we saw were, were people I think that understood our situation. Understood we've been put in a very difficult situation. And yet want us to try to do whatever we can, keep exploring it. Look at options on this topic and another that I'll, that I'll ask to add as well. But I think declining to discuss it also sends a message to the, to the public that I just don't want to see be our message. I mean, it's, you know, none of us signed up for this specifically, but we did sign up for this. For sitting up here and, and representing those that can't, can't be represented. We only got a hundred, a hundred and fifty or so responses, whatever that was. I get it. That's not, it's not the number of families in the district, but that's more than we normally get. And, and I do think we need, we need more of that kind of feedback to to build trust and, and gain momentum within the, within the district. We've done some great, great work in the last year. I, I just, I want to see that continue.
Just want to make sure we represent the majority of people that are in the middle, because I think that that's the group that gets forgotten here. We're looking at two sides that are completely different. But I think what the actual majority of Northern Lebanon is, they just want to be in person. One thing I heard tonight over and over again was that they tried cyber and it didn't work. For one reason or another, they did it. They wanted to be in person. And I just, I caution us that any risk we take that could shut us down, whether that be by PDE, DOH, numbers, whatever it is, we're putting that large group that just want to tough it out, put on a mask and go to school because they can't cyber, they can't virtual. And that's a risk that I worry about is that group of students.
I appreciate that.
Alright, I've only got five more. You did five more of these?
You're not counting or anything?
So, alright.
Can, can I make a motion to add a few meetings?
I have lived to regret making changes, but you know, I, I get it, that it's, it's good. And I think that it might relieve some pressure on this, on the, you know, those that feel adamant with masks. So wish I was last one voting on this so I could see, but I, I think I, I might change my vote. I, I just I, I don't see this as a, a good way either way, because now the way that's been framed, if we don't vote for it, it's like we have some kind of a, something in the, the back window that is, is inherently evil. So you know, I'm going to vote, but only because I want to save the integrity of the school board from making it look like those who voted against it were somehow trying to you know, subvert the will of the people, which is a terrible thing to do. So, okay.
And, and that's not my intent is to put it that way. I, I just, my intent is to say, I, I, I want to represent the people that are there and they're, they are sharing. That that's what they want us to do. So, so vote, vote your conscience. I think that's the best way to do it. And, and I, I, I respect however anyone votes on this. I really, really do.
I, I get that, Mike. And it was not meant as any kind of a, I was just making a point that it is now kind of a, you know, just the way I'm perceiving, but I didn't think that it was something intentional or anything. It's just the way that it is. So, okay.
As, as I understood it at executive session, every student who should have an exemption can get that exemption through this form. Simply by having their doctor verify that they have this condition that makes them eligible for exemption. The doctor does not have to state that they are eligible or that they approve a mask exemption. But the doctor signs off that they have the condition that makes them eligible. So in, in addition, we are giving students that grace period. So if they're filing for exemption, they do have the time needed to, to verify the condition with their medical provider. As I understood it in executive session, if we made that exemption form looser, that opens us up to, if I remember correctly, child fine issues that we could if students are getting exemptions and they don't actually qualify them, qualify for them, we could face potential consequences down the road that we certainly don't want to face. So as I see it, our exemption form was approved by our solicitor. It was explained that if we modify this, we are opening up the district for problems down the road. We're giving students and families the grace period to verify those exemptions. I don't see any need to discuss this further. I recognize that we want to honor the, the concerns and the needs of the public. But I think that we're already doing that by giving the opportunity to have time to, to see their medical provider. And by also simply verifying the condition rather than finding a provider that will say they are officially exempt. So I don't, personally, I don't see the need for further discussion on this issue. I think if we are opening this door to discuss something that was suggested and approved by our solicitor, what is to stop us from discussing everything that comes to us from our solicitor? On, on a legal standpoint, in school law, our solicitor knows far better than we do as board members. So I don't think that I, as a board member, want to discuss the exemption form any further. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to call for
Say something quickly. I'm, I'm for this just because this is such an evolving thing daily. Even before we came tonight, there was a letter shared with us. I forget, I forget if it was Gary or a parent that sent it to us, but Lebanon County is, has made a decision not to prosecute parents or students or whoever who does defy this, this mandate. So just because of the nature of this and, you know, the chances are when, when Brooke talks to us, if it's on Friday or over the weekend or next Monday, she'll probably very possibly have some new information. And, you know, there could be some things that have been discussed even on the state level and some changes, not that the mandate's going, going to change entirely, but she might be able to say to us, hey, there's, here's something that you could tweak a little bit to, uh, you know, to maybe make some more accommodations. And obviously if we do that, I don't, you know, we'd probably still have to come to an agreement as a majority of the board or whatever. But I just think this is going to be an ever-evolving thing for the next, you know, few days, weeks or months. So that's why I support this.
Mrs. Martin, may I have a vote to add for discussion modifications to the exemption form? Gray?
Alright, well, I will, I will the advice of, of Director Marlowe and vote my conscience on this. I will say no. Yes.
Marlowe?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Sicalic?
No.
Nom?
Yes.
Buck?
No.
Erdman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Is there any further new business this evening?
Yes. So I'd like to move to add a discussion and review agenda to consider uh, legal opposition to the mask order. Again, not asking for a vote to commit any expenditures at this point. This is really to pursue this further, look at what other options there are. This is another item that is just evolving so fast. I think what Mr. Director Erdman mentioned, even with, you know, Lebanon County, they're, they're just, there's so much going on that, you know, I don't know what I don't know on this. And, and I feel like I need some more discussion on it to decide. Do we, i- is there a different avenues? Or something else we can do? And, and I, I love our legal advice. I mean, I, you know, I take advice of lawyers on a daily basis, but I take it and then we do make our own decision. So I, I think we need to have more discussion on this item.
Can you repeat the motion?
So I, I moved out a discussion review agenda item to consider legal opposition to the masking order.
Does this also involve an executive session? Cause
First, we need a, a second to that motion.
Second.
And then I believe we would have discussion and that would all, our vote would be preceded by an executive session. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you can discuss some of this in, in executive session. However, if you're seeking legal advice about opposing the mask order, that's not going to come from a law firm that has sent up broad sweeping guidance. So if you if you want to investigate options, I, I really think this vote is about whether the board even wants to investigate options.
It is about investigating.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not about seeking the information about how to oppose. So really the vote that you're asking for now is for discussion on that issue. And so, a- and because I can't do even legal research without the support of five board members to say, we want to oppose this. And I can't tell you one way or the other whether we would have that in, in this session. So I guess discuss it and then we can decide if we will need an executive session or if you're just going to have another public discussion about whether you want to pursue something in opposition. It, it could be a little bit of both. If you're seeking legal advice from me, it would be an executive session. But I'm, I'm, I'm not going to provide legal advice on legal opposition to the mask order unless five of you tell me to do so. Because one, you know, three of you, a minority can't have you go in one direction. And then I would need to advise as to whether I can even do that.
This is fighting against the order itself while still complying. Is essentially what you're asking to do.
Yeah, um, this is this is trying to get the control back to the school board is, is really what I'm looking at. So that would be in some way fighting the order or finding a way where the order does not apply. And that this school board could then make the decision. This school board then ma- may make a decision to continue to mask, right? That, that's a real possibility. Th- this is to try to say, let, let's figure out if there's a way we can get that power back so that when we want to do this, we can do it. Someone said it very eloquently tonight because I'm not anti-mask. I think there are situations when I would say it would be great for us to be able to say as a school board, let's mask, but let's do it for this period. And then we, and then we stop it and we, and we move on. Right now, we have, our, our hands are tied on this. We're trying to wiggle through some things, but our hand, our hands are tied. I'd like for us to say, we want that power back. We want that ability back. And, and I, I want us to try to figure out how we do that. Continue, continue to do that, not, not wait to see if something else happens, if one of these lawsuits makes it, et cetera.
A- and for me, as I think about this, I think about it perhaps in a broader term, and that's to explore whether such options exist. I know that we've received counsel. I appreciate that counsel. As the board knows, I have significant legal questions of my own. I cannot make recommendations without violating rules of ethics, but I want to keep exploring. I think we need more time to see what the legal landscape is out there to review the cases that are currently pending. And for all I know, let's put I would be in favor of putting on the agenda. And for all I know, next Tuesday, we vote nine zero that we're not going to do anything, that we're not going to explore it. But I would like the opportunity to have that conversation to see if options do exist.
I'd like to add, one thing I didn't mention when I got an opportunity to speak today. And nobody brought up this point, but we're building this beautiful elementary school across the street and students are leaving and we don't know if we're going to get them back. But what's happening in our community right now, this is the most charged up they've been since I've been, been living in this district, which is like almost forty-two years of my life. There's going to be more leaving. We're going to have a beautiful building. What's happening to public education if we don't start taking some power back? Maybe that's a little harsh. I don't know if power back's the right word, but taking a little bit more of it into our own hands. You know, we're trusted to spend forty-plus million dollars and, you know, we're just like letting the floodgates of kids go to charter schools and sending out tens of thousands of dollars at a time. We need to find a way, like if this was a corporation, if this was like a corporation trying to figure out how to save money and how to like, you know, stop people from leaving, they'd be considering a ton of options. It's our duty to educate kids in our community.
I think to piggyback off of that though, we've been given advice that we would out, we would have to seek outside legal representation. So we're going against our solicitor, our solicitor who has gotten us through some serious snuffoos that I, I don't even want to go back upon. And to me, I say, where do we pull that money from to fight something that seems unethical because it's almost unwinnable? We're pulling it from math, we're pulling it from ESL, we're pulling it from the kids that show up. So you're still taking away an education in one way or another. If, if it goes against our solicitor, that is something that I think we, we all need to weigh very heavily. Your opinion can be your opinion, just weigh the solicitor and the advice you've been given. If you trusted that advice up until this point.
I hear what you're saying, but this isn't the order to, to do that. This is the, or, this is the, the ask to explore. We still need five people to pull the trigger on that. This is just checking out, you know, our options.
And I think Brooke, you shared with us that because of the guidance your firm has given, that you likely wouldn't be the one to take us down that path. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I, I don't think it would be consistent for our firm to provide fifteen pages of guidance indicating that we believe the order is enforceable and that school districts should be following it. And then at the same time, initiate litigation challenging that exact advice. I actually don't think that would work well for you as a client. Considering that that's in your possession. So I would make a recommendation if five board members indicated they wanted to pursue something, I would make a recommendation of who you might call on that. I, I simply don't know anyone who is currently filing that challenge. And I don't know of any school districts who are currently investigating that. I'm not aware of any.
Yeah, and I think for clarity, this is about investigating it, not necessarily, you know, hiring that individual to go represent us. I don't know if that's something Brooke, you can, because of, of, it sounds like a conflict there, if you can advise at all on that.
I, I'm not sure that I, I mean, any client who asks me for a referral for another lawyer who might help you out, I'm going to provide that information. It's not a conflict for me to say there, I know of a lawyer who might be pursuing this and you should go talk to them that that's who you, what you're pursuing. So I, I'm not going to make a specific recommendation, but if I know someone who has similar interests that is filing litigation, I'll let you know who that is.
So the request for investigation would basically be you giving us the findings that we've already read through the law firm. I mean, I know you're not giving legal advice.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
If we were to say, look into this loopholes, all of whatever it is that we're asking on this, this agenda item, you would simply refer us to the findings that your law firm has already found in what's been provided to us essentially.
Yeah, I mean, if you ask me to review whether I think you have the ability to oppose this order, I would go over what I've presented before. I would also go over an executive session, some additional information from a client who asked a similar question last year on a similar part of a different order and would talk to you about where I think there are substantial barriers to your success and standing.
And that is precisely what I would like to explore.
Well, I obviously am going to oppose this. You know, first of all, to me, you know, there are other avenues, other people that, that can litigate this. To put the burden of us trying to save Pennsylvania from this mask mandate with taxpayer money is, is wrong. And even, you know, we've already been given the advice in executive session. And yes, anybody can go anywhere if they keep looking and somebody will agree with them and say, oh, yeah, you have a great case and this is what you should do, and they'll gladly take your money. The money that our families and farmers and people in this school district have worked very hard for. Our job is education and to provide the best education. To try to find a loophole because you don't like the mandate is not a right way to do it by using taxpayer money on a lawsuit that our solicitor has said last week is, it won't stand up. Now, yeah, I get it, you can find somebody else. When you have two things up here, of the two, I would say, please, don't vote yes for this. This, this is just running down a rabbit hole, trying to find some, some piece of evidence that they can somehow twist to change this mandate in Lebanon, northern Lebanon County, which we have the tax rate that's like the fortieth lowest tax rate. You know, we use every penny that we have here in the best possible way. And to take this, this very politicized mask mandate and now use school-funded things to advance an agenda, I say is wrong. I respect everybody here, but this is just wrong. And I will oppose it.
But respectfully, again, this is the discussion that we should have next week. And I believe that this community deserves an up or down vote from this board to say definitively, this is not something we will pursue. Now, if, if this vote tonight to not put this on the agenda goes that way, then there's your definitive answer, I suppose. But I think my position is that I believe this community needs a vote from this board to say, we're not going down any of the roads you want us to go down. And I'm entirely open to that being a nine-nothing vote, but we haven't had that vote. We haven't had that discussion. We haven't had any of that, and I think that this community deserves that.
Well, the community is getting it right now. We are having this discussion. And if you vote no, that tells the community that we voted no. We do not want this lawsuit that is going to take their money and use it for things other than education. Plain and simple. And I don't want to get personal about this. I've said my piece. Respect everyone's opinion.
Yeah, I think-
Would anybody who did not speak like to comment?
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to, I just want to understand what it is. So we're just saying that we're putting it on the agenda so that we can discuss it in the public. We're not saying we're going to do it. So we just essentially want to present to the public that we have discussed the opportunity or the option of litigation.
The motion is to put on the agenda discussion of legal opposition to the mask order. It's an agenda item for discussion.
Okay.
Can I clarify a little bit there? So, you know, again, I think last week, as, as all of this happened so fast, we, I heard a lot, listened to a lot. But we didn't really, as, as a group, debate this, decide what we're going to do. We listened, you know, Brooke, to you and, and I do respect your opinion and the firms. I do think this is an item, though, that keeps on changing. And, and, you know, I'd like for us to discuss that. And that could be you updating us next week on this is what this looks like. Nothing has changed. And, and we are still in a position where it is an absolute no-win. And, and so, so for the record, I'm not saying right now to spend anything. I want to, I think this is changing constantly. And so for us not to keep looking at that and saying, is there a way that, that we as a board can regain the authority to make some of these decisions? I want to do that every week if I can. You know, I don't want to just wait and hope that somebody else gives it back to us. I know you don't, but, but, yeah, that's why we're here, Gary. You just get, you get to sit and listen, I guess.
Can I talk quick? I didn't speak yet about this. So I support the discussion of this. Director Gray, if we had a vote tonight, I would vote with you. I wouldn't, if this was an actual vote, I would not be forced spending taxpayer money just because of what Brooke had said before. But we had zero discussion on this. When Brooke talked about it, it was, we just kind of got blown away with what she said, and that's fine. I don't see an issue discussing it, but yes, if we did, if this was an actual vote tonight, I agree totally with what Brooke has said before, you know, five days ago or whatever. I don't think we would, should spend taxpayer money on something that is that much of an uphill battle. But three, four days from now, whenever this exec session happens, if, if things could change, maybe that would sway me. But as of now, I would vote no if it was a vote to spend this money on legal fees. As far as discussing it, I don't see any issue with that. So that's why I'll support that.
Yeah, based on what I know today, I would vote no to spend a large sum of money as well. I just don't feel like I know enough. And I think this thing is changing fast.
Our school, all schools in Pennsylvania follow an awful lot of state mandates. And if I understand correctly, these state mandates are not always voted upon by our legislature. But we don't spend time discussing if we're challenging these mandates. And I don't know of a lot of legal action that is taken against the mandates. And many of these mandates cost the school district an awful lot of money. But this is an issue that has become politicized. And I think that is the main reason why we are discussing challenging this. I hear so much about power, bringing power back to the school district. I think if we're looking for power, we're sitting in the wrong seats. As a school board member, I am not at all interested in power. What I do want is expert opinions for how to best educate our kids. Expert opinions for how to best run the school district and keep our school district out of legal issues and, and use our money wisely. I don't need power. I don't believe that we are the experts to make important decisions on public health issues. Therefore, we are looking to the experts in our Department of Health. I don't believe that it is our, that we should have the power to supersede the Department of Health, whether it is an order that is voted on or whether it is not. They are the experts, we are school board members. I'm not looking for power. I'm looking to get the best advice to educate our kids, to keep them safe and to do the best for our school district. And that includes using our money wisely. I would not in any way pursue legal opposition to the mask mandate.
And I believe that the law matters and I want to explore the law in detail.
Mrs. Martin, may I have a roll call vote to add to the agenda next week? A discussion of legal opposition to the mask mandate? Fowler?
No.
Marlo?
Yes.
Murray?
No.
Klein?
Yes.
Sekelik?
No.
Nom?
Yes.
Buck?
No.
Erdman?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Motion does not pass.
Hey, I got one more thing real quick. I don't know if this is a new business or not, maybe you can help me walk me through. But if, if masks, I hate that word, stick, is there any way we could talk about putting cameras back in the classroom? From all the feedback I get from the community, V3 isn't really a viable option. Is that something that's being discussed or how do we go about having that conversation?
Yeah, we can discuss it. I will tell you that I don't. First of all, I think depending on where they are in V3, there's, there are synchronous, teachers are live during office hours each day and some of our core courses. And I, it's not as many as I'd love to have, but they're there. If you're a K-6 student, those, they have the ability to zoom in live with a teacher. Mrs. Harris and the gentleman, I can't think of his name, that we officially hired tonight. They're meeting with all kids K-6 every day for both reading and math. And that's, it's live. It's not, I mean, yes, there's some accelerate usage and there's some Schoology usage, but there are opportunities to meet with them on a daily basis. This is not the V3 of last year or the years before. It's a, it's a-
I don't know, sorry.
But I will, I will tell you that, and, you know, let me give it some thought in terms of the ups and downs. But we asked our teachers to do the impossible and probably the biggest stressor last year. And it was not a good experience. I mean, it was what we had, it wasn't a great experience. I just don't know that that's the answer. I think if we're going to look for an answer because people are leaving, it should be to hire some other virtual teachers and allow them to just teach virtually and, and use COVID money, which, you know, is not, I mean, we have, we had that set aside for some other things, but that is a better educational option, in my opinion, than trying to put live stream cameras back in. But I can gladly do a workshop for the board on that as part of the discussion next week.
Yeah, I think not just, I think the public needs to hear that a little more. I'd love to hear it too, but I just don't know how we get that word out, you know, that that's, that's here.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, as board members, we can always arrange too for you to have a Zoom link to one of the particularly K-6. You know, the, the older kids, like I said, we did it where we had room to do it. I know Mr. Wagner, for instance, he teaches eighth grade history. He also has a V3 course during his day where he is available for kids to Zoom with him and ask him questions and get clarification. But K-6, they're doing some live instruction there. And, you know, I can get you Zoom links and, you know, I'd want to warn them. Hey, a board member might be joining you today. But just so you can see how they're interacting. And it's not perfect. It's their first try and I'm asking them to help design it and troubleshoot as we go. But I think that is a better option to be face-to-face. I mean, you know, to be face-to-face rather than to have a teacher up at the front trying, kids trying to hear what's going through the microphone.
What about doing like a PR perspective now that we kind of have that opportunity to do a day in the life of a V3 student? And it just do a little commercial style, kind of like showing that one-to-one with the student and the teacher interacting and maybe advertise that on social media, put it on a website.
It's a great idea. I mean, we talked about it a little bit and I was cautious because I don't think we've worked out all the kinks. I expect it next year to, Mr. Bruce has really come in gang, you know, like gang fire, really thinking about, he's examining a lot of things. I gave him some other things to look into. We're looking at edgenuity because that can be downloaded in our Schoology platform and we wouldn't have to use two different platforms for the kids. There's a lot of things that I think are in the works. It wasn't perfect. So I, while we did advertise it, it wasn't advertised incredibly heavily. However, I would feel pretty comfortable in our K-6 range especially to get some video of that or, you know, and try to promote it.
That's where the primary focus.
I'll get Lauren on.
And I can attest to that, having kids in V3 last year and this year, V3 this year is different. The teacher that my daughter has, has, brings a lot of energy. There's that synchronous time. The curriculum is different. She gets a weekly, like a to-do list. It is a different feel already, just a few days in. I am very hopeful that it will be a very different experience than V3 last year. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn? May I have a second discussion? This is a unanimous roll call vote. Your vote will be recorded in the affirmative unless you say nay or I abstain. The motion has passed. Have a good evening.